You're allowed to speak on anything that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. We ask that you stand at one of the two side podiums, that's this one here, or this one here. Stand only where I am if you have audio or visual materials to present, and at that time I'll give you a wireless microphone like the one I'm using. Before beginning your remarks, please clearly state your full name and address, including apartment or business suite number. That will signal the three minutes of, the start of your three minutes of speaking time, and the green light at your podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will turn on, and you should begin to wrap up your remarks. And of course, when your three minutes has ended, the red light at your podium will turn on, and you should wrap up your remarks and take your seat. The other opportunity on the agenda to address the council is during the public hearings portion of the agenda. After the proponents have made their presentations, and the mayor asks for public testimony, at that time you're invited forward, and those same rules, where to stand, giving your address, three minutes, all still apply. There will be an HRA meeting immediately following the city council meeting tonight, so when you hear the mayor adjourn the city council meeting, he will gavel back in for the start of the HRA meeting. If you choose not to stay for the entire meeting, that's just fine. We ask that you exit as quickly and quietly as possible as the meeting will remain in section. Also, keep in mind that the only thing separating these chambers from the lobby is a sheet of glass. So as you congregate out there, please do keep your conversations quiet, as sometimes our microphones can pick them up out there, too. With that, does anyone have any questions before we begin? Seeing none, enjoy the meeting. Thanks a lot for being here.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19, 2016, meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Mencken.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Stott Stewart.
Here.
Member Stottin.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
I'm here. We have in front of us this evening a form of meeting agenda. Manager Neil, you wanted to make one little modification, I think?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may, I would like to add an item C under Special Recognitions and Presentations, want to introduce a new employee to the council.
Okay. All right, very good. With that change, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adopt the agenda in its amended form, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay, carried. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to address the council with respect to an issue that's not otherwise on the agenda? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name is Michael Cashman. I'm here tonight just to comment briefly on a matter concerning an expansion of the Public Works Facility at the cold storage facility down in the southwest corner of Edina, and the cutting of mature trees there, and the impingement of the trail. And I have brought this to the attention of the council. I believe the council is aware of my concerns, and I hope when that project is completed, the part trail will be restored, and some natural plantings will occur in that area to create a buffer along the trail to shield it from the Public Works Facility expansion there, and hopefully that, that expansion can be minimized.
All right. Mr. Cashman, thank you.
Thank you.
We need Mr. Cashman's address.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Cashman, your address, please.
My address is 5820 Vernon Lane, Edina, Minnesota, 55436.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cashman.
Thank you.
And thank you for that correspondence as well. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter this evening of concern to them? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward. Next matter in front of us is the consent agenda. We've got about 13 items on the consent agenda, not about, we do have 13 items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion, a second to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay, carried. And now we are on to Special Recognitions and Presentations, and Manager Neil, did you want to introduce Mr. Ricks?
Well, I think I do. We are fortunate, and tonight, to be able to host our, our new executive director of the Metropolitan Airports Commission, his name is Brian Ricks. I hope it's, I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. And we've asked through our representative to the commission, Lisa Palin, if, if, if we could somehow arrange a, a chance for us to meet Brian before he gets too busy, and she was helpful in getting us onto his calendar. So, Mr. Ricks, tell us a little bit about who you are and what you do.
Mr. Ricks, welcome.
Thank you very much. Mayor Hovland and counselors, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As, as City Manager Neil indicated, my name is Brian Ricks. I'm the new executive director and CEO of the Metropolitan Airports Commission. I've replaced a very longstanding Jeff Hammel, who I know was a familiar face to you, and really kind of a legend in our industry, having worked at the MAC for 39 years. Also want to recognize Commissioner Pealan, who was, who was with me this, this evening, and appreciate the, her taking the opportunity to, to set that up. I've been at the commission now about two months, and so I'm still working and, and getting used to the, the operation at the MAC. However, I started my career actually as an intern at the Metropolitan Airports Commission back in the mid 80s, and then after interning and graduating from college, I went through the aviation program at St. Cloud State University, came back and was able to obtain a position full-time, where I was actually working in the noise office and supervising interns that went out and monitored noise throughout the community. I look forward to getting to know all of you very well. I am a collaborator, I believe in strong collaboration, and I think that's how, how you are successful and how we together are successful. Obviously, we are facing some issues at, at the airport, and resounding around noise, and which you are all very familiar with. We have a very, as you know, a very strong noise department that I think collects a lot of information, a lot of data, and gets that information out, and I can assure you, we want to maintain that collaborative relationship with you, and continue to share information and respond to any, any concerns that you may have as time goes by here. A few, a few trends at the airport, our passenger numbers are up about 3.7% year-to-date. That's on top of about a 4%, 4.5% increase last year, and an increase the year before, so that trend is continuing. As you know, airport numbers kind of roll with the economy. When the economy is strong, numbers seem to respond. Our operations numbers are up about 1.3% year-to-date this year. They've been declining and a little flat over the last four to five years, mainly because airlines have started to phase out, or began phasing out, the smaller regional jet and some of the smaller aircraft, and are substituting those with larger aircraft. So while those numbers were going down, passenger numbers were going up with the increase in, in the size of, of aircraft. Our, and, and from an operation standpoint, our operations last, last year were about 404,000 annual operations, and about 1,100 per day versus about 540,000 operations back in the year 2004. So you can, you can tell there's definitely a trend there. We are seeing a greater percentage of what we call O&amp;D, origination and destination traffic, and that's traffic that originates here in the Twin Cities area, or flies in and ends their flight here. What used to be about only 40% O&amp;D traffic is now up to 59% from numbers I just saw. And what that is a result of is really airlines such as Sun Country, Southwest, Spirit, adding flights into our market, which is good, because it's, it's had a trend that has driven the airfares down, which is good for the consumer. And we have currently non-stop service to 155 locations, 126 of those are domestic, and we have 29 non-stop international destinations, with Rome being announced just about a month and a half ago or so. Been a good year for air service development. We've announced 15 new routes since the start of this year, so very strong development, which again, I think is a reflection of the strong economy in the, in the Twin Cities area. The, the Airport Commission just yesterday passed a, or approved, a sustainability management plan, which we are very pleased to roll out. One of the things in that sustainability management plan is a goal to cultivate new and growing relationships, and become really a resource for collaboration. So what you will see is we are currently undertaking a, an effort to go out into the community and survey residents, and, and find out how we can really communicate more effectively with our surrounding areas and our surrounding jurisdictions. This airport needs to be integrated into the communities that are around it, and so that will be a top priority as we, as we move forward. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have, but again, I want to just thank you for the opportunity to be here, do a brief introduction, and look forward to working with you as time goes by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Member Swenson has a question, and other council members may as well.
Actually, I was going to introduce you to Member Brindle. I've been serving on the NOC as the substitute person-at-large for the last couple of years, and will do so through the end of the year, and then Member Brindle will take over for me. So I'm going to give you just two faces, which is a meeting I think you're going to maybe be at. Are you on the agenda there tomorrow? So I'll be seeing you tomorrow again.
You, you will. I am on that agenda, and, and am very impressed with the makeup of the, the NOC, and given both community and stakeholder, or airline representation on that, I think that's the right formula, and it sounds like it's been very successful. So I look forward to seeing you tomorrow and working with you, Counselor Brindle.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Ricks? Member Stewart?
Not a question so much as a statement. I'd just like to assure you, Mr. Ricks, while we have you here, that as you get to know us here in Edina, we are not advocates for any NIMBY arguments. We do believe that our fair share of air traffic noise is going to come our way, but we are strong advocates for fairness and the fair allocation and distribution of the burden of air traffic noise over all communities surrounding the airport, not just channeling it over a few.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good. Couple of questions, Mr. Ricks. You mentioned that there were 15 new routes announced this year. How many of those are international versus domestic?
There were, with that, I believe, three, three international, the rest were domestic. Three to four international, the rest were domestic.
And I may have missed this in your presentation, but the survey of communities that you're going to do, is that something that you're in the process of working up, that you're going to be doing fairly soon?
We are, we are. We've, we've hired some assistants to help us with that, and so that process will be starting very soon.
Okay. Good. And then I also want to assure you that we will continue to be a good partner with you, and we're your Western ally. And we've appreciated so much the work that the MAC has done with us on airplane noise. And as Member Stewart said, we're, we understand there's advantages in being close to a great airport like the one that you're running now, but with respect to noise, we want to spread the pain.
Absolutely.
And so we want to keep you aligned with us with that attitude, as we all work with the FAA on this, on this whole RNAV process that is going to come back to us here on an outbound basis.
Right.
In the next few years.
Absolutely. And, and we appreciate your support, and, and we will maintain that, that collaborative, that collaborative working relationship where we can help each other. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Ricks.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come over. Ms. Pealan, thank you for coming over as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you for your representation. All right. Next, we've got Jordan Gilgenbach, is going to talk about recycling. I noticed that additional containers, bigger containers, more frequent pickup is a, is a hot theme for you on this particular survey.
Yeah, it was nice to have some additional comments compared to the last few months. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As I mentioned, my name is Jordan Gilgenbach. I'm a communications coordinator here at the city, and as mentioned, I'm presenting tonight on the Speak Up Edina discussion that was held in June, which focused on residential recycling. For those who may not be aware, speakupeedina.org is the city's civic engagement site. Last month marked our fourth year using this site. Over the last two and a half years, we've been holding a monthly discussion on this site, on varying topics, and I've been privileged to come back to you guys and present these findings to you every month. As mentioned, the June discussion focused on recycling. We asked the, these questions, what do you think of the current cart sizes and pickup schedules, and if they're adequate for the recycle, for the residents' recycling needs, whether or not they prefer a weekly pickup, what they would be willing to pay as an increase for a weekly pickup if we were to switch to one, if the environmental impact of a weekly pickup is, is concerning to them, and if we were to allow for outdoor, outdoor storage of these carts, if additional screening would or would not be necessary, and how residents would feel about that. The made, or the, I'm sorry, the June discussion was open from May 25th to July 11th. We got, between Speak Up Edina and the comments that were made on Nextdoor, we received 232 comments. This is by far the largest response that we've seen on all of our discussions held so far, with just shy of, or about 7,500 total page views. All of the commenters on this one, as expected, were from Edina. Again, a lot of comments, all of those comments are all included in the packet for, for you, if you haven't already taken a look at them, or for any residents that are interested in reading all of those. This is a really, it was really tough to come up with this, this summary of all of the comments, and trying to get everybody's viewpoints in there, but this is kind of a summary of them. It seems that a lot of people currently are filling up the, the largest bins, or their bins, on a bi-weekly schedule right now. There may be some sort, a little bit of an education issue, that people don't know that they can request a second bin, or increase their, their bin size to a larger size. There are several people that said that when their recycling bins get full, they end up throwing their recycling in the trash, which kind of negates the, the whole idea of recycling in the first place. Smaller families, however, or those who live alone, don't see any problem with the current, current bin sizes or the pickup schedules, and don't see any, any need for any change. To get the most benefit for recycling, having this bi-weekly garbage pickup and weekly recycling would be good. Also, people say that the current contracted garbage, or the, I'm sorry, the current contracted recycling hauler, currently, there's a willingness issue to be able to pick up additional recycling set next to their bins. They'll, they'll leave notes saying to put all of the recycling inside of the bins, otherwise they will not pick them up. And so there are a lot of complaints about that as well. Obviously, truck trips are a concern. I've, I saw in the comments, seven and a half trips per week on average. Somebody counted as many as 15 trucks in a week on the road. So truck, trip concerns continue to be an issue. As I mentioned, resident education may still be needed on, on what their options are currently. When it comes to the cost, or an increased cost, you could look at that in a lot of different ways, depending on how a negotiated or renegotiated contract with, with Republic Services may go. Some people suggested maybe that, that the cost could be dependent on this, on the bin size or your pickup frequency, to consider local vendors instead of a national, larger company. People cite that some of the, the smaller, more local companies have, and use smaller trucks with, I think they said, two axles instead of three. So smaller trucks, less wear and tear on the roads, less possible hitting of, of branches above them, and that the willingness to pay more depends on their need to pay more. Like I mentioned, those who are filling up their recycling bins now are much more willing to pay for additional service, those who aren't, aren't willing to subsidize that service for others. Those who said that they would like to see a, a service increase, said that you could even go as far as doubling, or even more than doubling, the current rate. The current rate is $6 per quarter, including everybody's water bills every quarter. By doubling that, you'd go up to 12, and many seem, it seems that that could still be a pretty, pretty negligible fee, given the, the frequency that that's billed. Like I mentioned, those who live alone don't want to subsidize other people that consume too much, quote. And when it comes to screening, most people seem to think that the screening is necessary. They don't really want to see the bin sitting out, out from the sides of the houses, or on, in front of the houses. They think that if you can't fit them in your garage, which a lot of people have issues with, that they should be screened. A couple of comments mentioned the, looking into the possibility of having a couple of drop-off locations. Hattipan County has a recycling drop-off center in Bloomington. While not convenient for some, it exists, and it's relatively close by, though they say that, some people said that maybe we could have a couple roll-off recycling containers that are at the former Public Works Site in Grandview, while that's not being currently built on or used as a, as an option, and maybe until this contract expires in 2019 and it's renegotiated. There's also been dissatisfaction with Republic's customer service that was, that was aired. And a good quote from this is that if the city is serious about recycling, it should make it easier to do so for residents. I thought that that was a, a good quote to include, given the city's green initiatives. Obviously, yeah.
Go ahead. There were a couple opportunities I thought we had during this survey that I'm wondering if in the future we should take, and that was, there were some people that didn't realize you could get a different-sized can.
Right.
And then someone did write in, but I think if we know something as a city and we see it come up, it would be a really great educational moment to be able to say, yes, you can order up or down your can. I think they have three sizes, actually. The other thing I thought was pretty interesting, another educational moment, was that they're mad, a number of people were mad because we don't go around ticketing or putting flyers in people that don't get their can away right away, and we've always only done that on complaint. So I think it's important to tell them that, so if it's something that really bugs them, because their neighbor always leaves it out for two days, then they just know they have to call the city, and then we'll take care of it for them. So, you know, similar to lawn grass, and a few other things, we only do on complaint. It's, you know, we don't drive the streets after every recycling day the next morning to make sure the cans are out of sight, so.
Very good points.
And it, I just thought it would be helpful, because we did have a number of people, I was surprised when I read through it, how many people we had responding, and they were on both sides.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Stottin?
Did you have more, Jordan? I can wait until the end.
I've just got one more, but that's fine.
Yeah, Jordan, go ahead and finish, then we'll go to questions.
No problem. If, if the council decides to, to look into this, or for the staff, or for the E.C. to look into this a little more, some things to consider when it comes to recycling based on these comments, it's obviously going to be the additional cost that the residents would have to pick up, and that the city may have to pick up in order to provide this additional service. With that, any, any change in service is going to result in a contact, contract renegotiation with, with Republic Services. Keeping in mind also that the smaller garages can't accommodate more than, more than one or two bins that they currently have, or the larger bins, and that there's also that additional cost of screening if somebody does need to store their bins outside. Obviously, like I mentioned, additional education on bin options, as they currently stand, and as they may come forward in the future. We could also look into possibly doing a weekly pickup opt-in, with different colored carts, was mentioned by somebody. But with these, and the number of truck trips, obviously you're going to also need to keep in mind the impacts of organics recycling pickup, as more haulers are offering this service, that's going to result in more trucks. And, and they continue to monitor the garbage hauling licenses versus the one-hauler preferences that the residents may have. I know we did a discussion on that about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, a lot of comments on that one, a lot of mixed, mixed comments on that one. If we're looking to change, a lot of people had said, look at maybe changing garbage to a bi-weekly pickup instead, and recycling to a weekly pickup. I'm not sure what kind of enforcement we can have with that, being that garbage is currently by private haulers, but it's something to keep in mind. We could always look at variable rates, again, based on cart size and, and pickup schedule, that the increase, recycling may offset the environmental impacts of the additional pickup every week. If people are recycling more, that's less going into landfills, and may negate that, that additional carbon footprint from those trucks. Environmental costs versus environmental benefits of that weekly pickup, and currently with the bi-weekly pickup, you know, there's always the, the possibility that someone's going to forget what their week is, or, or they're going to be out of town that week and can't get it out, and then their recycling is going to stack up more, they're more apt to throw it in the garbage, or it's not going to be picked up, or what have you. And then with, with some of these options, there may also be staffing implications for, for managing the different rates and the billing of that, and the complaints and questions that may come in.
All right.
With that, I can stand with any other questions.
Thank you. Member Stottin, thanks for those observations.
So I know that, that you're kind of constantly in search for the Holy Grail on this, this Speak Up business, and I thought this was a really good month. It was really, what I thought was fascinating is you could read all those comments, and you got every single possible side of the argument.
You did.
And, and so I was thinking, for instance, we have the Energy and Environment Commission looking at single hauler, we should make sure all of this information, data gets to them. It's a wonderful kind of set of, of information, because the, this, this online community basically replicated all the arguments on various sides, and it made it, I mean, the good news is you know a lot from it, the bad news is it confirms that it's really hard to make everybody happy on this issue, because there's a lot of different arguments. Couple of questions, one, picking up on what Councilmember Swenson had talked about. How would someone tell what size their bin is?
It's a good question. You could, I guess you could get 95 gallons of water, and put them in a bin.
I thought about trying that.
That seems inefficient, and then you're just going to end up with a lot of plastic water bottles.
So it might be, I think, picking up on that notion, taking some of this and, and using it as a information to consumers. Because I went out and looked at mine, and thought, hey, the larger size, maybe I can, but I couldn't tell how big mine was.
I think to-
I could carry mine over to your house, because I have a large size, and we can compare.
I think to kind of answer your question, I think the standard one that's issued is that middle, middle-sized one, it's like an 80, 80-something gallon.
Okay.
But they can opt up to, I think it was a 95 gallon, so an extra 10 gallons worth of space.
And then your trash company will let you opt down to your garbage. So you can actually keep the same width of the footprint in your very small double garage if you have to.
Right.
So that you can get both in.
And, and I know the, every other, one of the comments was for garbage, that in the summertime, that can get a little gamey.
Yeah.
And I know my organics hauler does- And I know my organics hauler does every other week in the wintertime, but during the summertime they do every week, otherwise it gets a little smelly.
And that was especially mentioned when it comes to pet waste in the summers.
Yeah.
I could imagine that's not very pleasant.
Right. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you, Member Sutton. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Jordan.
Great, thank you.
It's interesting, that was the most active participation you've had in several months on issues.
Yeah, hope we can keep it going.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want to set up the current conversation?
Open Streets on 50th.
Thank you. Yeah, our current discussion that's going on right now, going up through August eighth, we're looking at the Open Streets on 50th event. This event was a first-time event that we held last, the last Sunday in September last year. We're working already on the second annual event coming up on September 25th. We want to know what people think about that event, for those who attended it, what they thought about what was offered, the vendors that were there, what maybe we could change, as we continue to plan this event coming up for September. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jordan. Manager Neil, you have a new employee you would like to introduce?
I do, thank you.
The council this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Last year, we had a pretty good discussion at the council level about how do we, how do we really move forward a number of environmental issues that we wanted to, initiatives, programs, et cetera. And the council was generous enough, and I think farsighted enough, to think that a position dedicated to that on our city staff would be a great way to move a number of initiatives forward with a dedicated person who was working on this full-time. And so, we moved forward in developing a plan for such a position, and the council approved that position. And I told you it'd take about half a year to bring that person on, and I'm glad to tell you that that person started her new job yesterday. Her name is Tara Brown, and Tara's here tonight, and I asked her if she would step up and introduce herself. Later tonight, you're going to be looking at the Partners in Energy Initiative and the Memorandum of Understanding. This is Tara's second day. She hasn't had anything to do with that in its development. She's going to have a lot to do with it from here on out. But Tara, could you just take a few minutes and introduce yourself to the council? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, council. As Scott said, my name is Tara Brown, and I previously come to you from the Target Corporation, where the last three years I spent on the sustainability team there, helping with the enterprise-wide strategy of executing and delivering sustainability into the core of business and to merchandising. As Scott said, the EEAC plan is coming to you, and I look forward to digging into that and delivering that to help the office and the city become more sustainable.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara. Welcome. All right, we're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the public hearing portion, and we have one public hearing matter in front of us this evening, and Director Milner has this matter, which is a request by the school district to vacate a sewer
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. As the mayor mentioned, this is a vacation request of a sanitary sewer easement at 6754 Valley View Road at Edina High School, embodied in Resolution 2016-67. This is the green, well, this is the high school site. They're doing many renovations to their athletic fields on the bottom, the bottom fields. They're doing a major operations down there right now, and we had a sanitary sewer main go right through the middle of those fields. That's the green line you see on this graphic. They have since realigned that sanitary sewer line with the red lines to remove those manholes from the middle of their athletic fields. In that process, we had a existing sanitary sewer easement shown here in the purple. That is no longer needed, and they're requesting vacation of that easement. The yellow on this graphic is the new sanitary sewer easement which they have provided already. So, we have that in hand, and this is just to consider vacating the purple existing sanitary sewer easement. The city has no issues with this. We now can maintain that sanitary sewer system with the manholes they've installed to our specifications, and private utilities had no objections. So, we recommend the council approves Resolution 2016-67, requesting vacation of the sanitary sewer easement across those athletic fields. Stand for any questions?
Thank you, Director Milner. Questions for Director Milner at this point in time?
No.
All right, thank you, council. This is a public hearing matter. Is there, I'm going to now open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this Seeing no one coming forward and hearing no one express a desire to testify, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Questions or a motion regarding this matter to set us up for a conversation?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2016-67, which is the vacation of the sanitary, the existing sanitary sewer easement, 6754 Valley View Road, being replaced with a new sewer easement. Any discussion, questions for Director Milner? Seems fairly straightforward. All those in favor of the passage of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you, Director Milner. We're going to now, we will now move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter before us this evening, under Section 8A of the agenda, is a sketch plan review for a proposed project or a potential project at 7700 France Avenue South, Fraunshue Companies on behalf of Twin Cities Orthopedics. Director T.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This, just to tee this up a little bit, this is a two-phase development that's proposed this evening. First phase is sixty to eighty thousand square feet of medical office, and the second would be quite substantial, substantially larger addition, a 200,000-square-foot addition to that medical space. So, what's important for the council as you consider this this evening and provide comment, under our current zoning, the Phase One would require a variance from our floor area ratio requirements. Based on the existing zoning of this site, which is office, they can develop the site with fifty percent square footage of the size of the site. The proposed Phase One would be at fifty-four percent, so they would need a variance there. The Phase Two is quite a bit over the fifty percent requirement, it's point eighty-one. So, we're almost doubling the allowed density on the site with Phase Two. So, there's a couple of options as they proceed forward. It would be requesting a site plan review with those rather significant variances, or we could rezone this to PUD, and they would come in with an overall development plan for the entire site, and we would essentially be writing a zoning ordinance just for that seventeen-acre parcel. That would enable the city to require some of the principles of the Greater Southdale Area Study that we're working on, providing sidewalks, landscaping, architecture, some of those things that we're looking for out of that study. That would be staff's recommendation for proceeding with this. So, with that, I would introduce Dave Anderson, and I believe he's going to introduce the team.
All right, thank you, Director T.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Evening.
I'm Dave Anderson with Fraunshue Incorporated, 7101 West 78th Street. We're the owner of the property. We are here tonight with several folks, members of our team, who'll be here to answer questions for you. We were at the Planning Commission on June 22nd for sketch plan review, so what you hear from us tonight are some thoughts and continuation of our planning effort, since we're at the sketch plan review level. We took a lot of thought and input and continuation of the efforts of this project into consideration, which you'll see tonight, and our design team will walk you through that. But first, I'd like to introduce Aaron Johnson, Chief Operating Officer with Twin Cities Orthopedic, who will be the tenant on this property, and Aaron will tell you a bit more about their organization and their plans.
All right, thanks, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Dave, thank you for the introduction. So, really appreciate the opportunity to speak about the project that we'll be reviewing with you this evening. And prior to jumping into the details, I thought I'd give a little bit of background regarding TCO and our presence in the Edina community. As I'm sure many of you know, we built our existing location off of 62 in France and occupied back in 2010, and that was really the end result of four or five different clinics coming in and consolidating under one roof to provide kind of the one-stop-shop, if you will, for orthopedic care for Edina residents and surrounding communities. And during the planning phases of that project, our physicians initially thought we would only require about forty thousand square feet of space, and fortunately, we built closer to eighty with that project, thinking that would be enough space to position us well into the future. Again, fortunately for our organization, we maxed that space within three years, and as a result of that, no longer have that one-stop-shop for orthopedic care in this community. So, what I mean by that is, we have physical therapy space located off-site in Edina at the Southdale Medical Office Building adjacent to Fairview Southdale Hospital. We also have our prosthetics and orthotics office at another location here in Edina. So, we went through a fairly extensive search over the course of a year, you know, reviewing sites that really would allow TCO to continue to grow and expand and continue to meet the needs of our patients. And after that extensive search, we landed on the 7700 France Avenue location, because we felt that it provided us ability to expand both in the immediate term, but then also into the future as we continue to see, you know, our practice continue to diversify and grow over time. So, you know, again, I think the primary focus for us was we wanted to have the ability to expand in the future, consolidate our physical therapy spaces to this location at 7700 France Avenue, move our prosthetics and orthotics division to that location, but then also provide some new services at that location, in addition to what we're currently providing at our locations in Edina. I think the other important point I wanted to make is, we felt that this site would provide a certain level of usefulness or utility that would be required of the program elements that will be a part of this space. So, I think that that's something I would encourage everyone to consider as we talk through the plan with you this evening. So, we're excited about the opportunity. I think we've put together a really good team and a really good plan for the council to review this evening, and I look forward to any feedback that you all have for us. So, again, thank you for the time, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric and Dave.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mayor, members of the council, Carrie, are there visuals from the submittal, or would you like us to be presenting these?
We didn't produce the whole, they were handed up.
Okay, fantastic. Here, I'll just.
Counsel, the largest.
Okay, that'd be great. Mayor, members of the council, I'll just set this up briefly, and Eric will run through the details, but really, the essence of this project is seventeen-acre site that now contains a building of just over 300,000 square feet in the 7700 France building. It's a multi-tenant office building, as you're aware, that fronts France Avenue. And the vision for TCO is a Phase One project of sixty to eighty thousand square feet. That would be a three or four-story building. And there's some detailed elements to that building footprint and how it's laid out that are very specific to an orthopedic specialty center, some of which Aaron touched on. But the site plan and the studies that have come together have really tried to take advantage of some of the features of the site, some of the characteristics of the site, the access points in and through the site, which provides access from four different directions, from the north, east, south, and west into this property. Eric will touch on some of those things. We've really focused on the pedestrian connection elements of this, taking it from the Southdale Area Framework, and really tried to bring those to the next level of discussion, and you'll see that here tonight. Open space and green elements, as you know, there today, we have quite a bit of asphalt, and what we're able to do through this design is soften the site to bring more green space, net area green space to the site than is there today. And that visual from Minnesota Drive particularly, what's happening is we're creating the bookends to Minnesota Drive, and we're creating an inviting and pleasing set of elements that will come together as customers and visitors enter that site, and Eric will share some of the perspectives on that tonight as well. So, with that, Eric is here, Nick Sparitiz, the design team's here, and others with us will answer questions later.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Altman. My name is Eric Reiners with Sparitiz Reiners Architects, and it's been a pleasure to not only work with TCO over the years and Fraunshue Companies, but also with staff through this process. It's been very, very informative. And as Dave mentioned, we were in front of Planning Commission last month, and they asked, having not seen it before, they were coming in kind of cold, and we didn't even have any building images, which I think for a sketch plan might be a little unusual. We just concentrated on site planning and zoning issues, but the Planning Commission asked really, really good questions. Various members of the commission posed those questions different ways, but there was three kind of resounding themes. And as Dave Anderson again mentioned already, the first and foremost was the priority on pedestrians, not only about the perimeter of the site and how it connects the site to the greater area, but also internal site circulation. And we heard that over and over, and I'll touch on some of those points and how we addressed those comments when we went back to the drawing board. They also asked us to explain and look at how we have sited our building and the parking structure on the site. And again, when we went back to the drawing board, we looked hard at that and revisited the issues that drove us to position the site and the parking ramp the way we did. And also, the parking quantity, there was some concern over the quantity we were providing on-site, and was it overparked? And frankly, at the time, we were illustrating more parking spaces than the calculated need. But again, in the process of revisiting the design and going back to the drawing board, a number of these issues have kind of flushed out. First of all, the parking count, as you'll see in the current plan, is virtually balanced with parking need, and that's a result of the introduction of more green space on-site and beginning to address the stormwater management issues that we have to with this large surface area. We ended up moving the building slightly off the corner. It still addresses the intersection at the southwest corner of the site very, very well, but we created a little more green space and more area to manage our stormwater on-site. As you may or may not be aware, there's a bit of a problem in this part of town with stormwater management, and we have a great deal of surface area to treat and manage on-site. So, we've done that by introducing yet another stormwater element right at the south entry to the site off of Minnesota, and again, immediately around the building on the southwest corner. We'll treat the balance of our stormwater requirements underground, and that'll be under the northeast corner of the site, where we'll be collecting the water off the parking structure and the north lots and directing it to the northeast corner underground. The building's siding, again, we went back to the drawing board and really asked ourselves again, is this really the best location for the building? Is it going to serve us in the best way moving forward as we consider future expansions? And likewise, with the structure. And for a variety of reasons, including the demising of the site or parceling of the site, and future expansion of the structure itself to the north and west as we move forward, and I'll show you that phasing plan here shortly. This location for the structure really is best. It provides great visibility to the structure from the intersection of France Avenue, and provides us with the most flexibility moving forward on the site. It also gives the building optimal access for visitors. Some people feel that, well, coming out of a ramp directly into the structure might be ideal, but actually, coming into a main entry... be ideal, but actually coming into a main entry with directories and a consistent route to your destinations within the building from a main entry point is really the most practical. This also gives us the opportunity to provide dedicated entrances for physical therapy and for care suites within the building. The pedestrian is a priority onsite. And because of the simple volume of cars and anticipated traffic for the more than four hundred thousand square feet of office space that will eventually be here, we wanted to emphasize the pedestrian at the perimeter, just for safety more than anything. We are providing internal site circulation.
From the building main entrance.
Just a minute. Jennifer's going to give you a microphone.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Eric. So from the...
Can you sit back?
Thanks. So from the main entrance, which I'm pointing to here at the inside corner of Twin City Orthopedics, we have a covered walk, and rather grand walk, stretching to the east on the south edge of the parking structure and connecting directly to the west entrance of seventy-seven-hundred-France. Likewise, north-south, we've provided green space and boulevard walks to connect the north edge and primary east-west route internal to the site. Now, this is very intentional, again, because we're bringing traffic in from the west, from the south, from the north, and even from the east, all into a ramp structure located right at the middle of the site. We wanted to maintain pedestrian, safe pedestrian access about the site perimeter and in very dedicated, carefully planned routes internally. This plan is really the exact same site plan, simply showing the deck level. We're planning at a minimum one-level deck structure above grade, and that would be to serve a sixty thousand square foot medical office building. You'll see that the site area total summary up at the top of the page assumes an eighty thousand square foot building. That would require two full decks. And here you see we have stormwater management at the south edge and all around the west boundary and southwest corner. And again, this is the region underground where we'd be treating the balance of our This plan illustrates potential future phasing. And I don't think anyone on our team would say anything different than, we really don't know today exactly what that'll be. But we do know it could be as large as two hundred thousand square feet or possibly more. And to do that, or complete that future phase, it would require additional parking decks atop the two, one or two that we start with, and additional site modifications. But again, we'll be maintaining the stormwater management, perimeter buffers, and water features that we're developing in the initial phase. This particular plan illustrates the highlights for pedestrians, both within and around the site. When we showed our site plan and reviewed it with the Planning Commission, we had a pedestrian walk planned along the north boundary from the center of the site at the north point of access, where my finger is here, stretching east out to France Avenue. And that was to address or begin to address some of the Southdale Area Planning District requirements. Practically, before we have participation, the landowners to the north or beyond, that doesn't really do much for us. So in lieu of that sidewalk in the initial phase, Furniture Companies and Twin City Orthopedics are proposing to dedicate a ten-foot-wide perpetual public access agreement for development of that pedestrian requirement as adjacent landowners fall into place. Internally, the light blue highlights sidewalks and pedestrian points that are currently available onsite. And you can see that pedestrians can traverse the eastern boundary of the site down to Minnesota Drive, but that's where it ends. And so we're proposing to extend that pedestrian access all the way along the south boundary to the southwest corner, together with clear and precise areas for pedestrians to traverse the inside of the site. And then when future landowners are aligned for that pedestrian access agreement, the north boundary can be developed as well. You'll see here that in light blue, we've also illustrated the concourse that goes through the interior of the existing seventy-seven-hundred building. And that is going to be an amenity not only to the occupants of Twin City Orthopedics, but all of the site users at seventy-seven-hundred to simplify access through and across the This final diagram begins to highlight what we have for site green space. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the site. West of the existing building is really just a simple sea of asphalt. There's no parking lot islands, there's no green strips, there's really little relief from the asphalt. So again, we're taking the opportunity where we're introducing pedestrian routes to introduce strips of green to soften that, help us with our stormwater management, and reduce our heat island. But also, again, we're broadening that green space and introducing water elements along the south and west.
I have a question on the stormwater, if I may?
Yes.
Okay. So when we visited, did you mention a cistern, an underground cistern on this site?
We did as a possible point of exploration.
Okay.
We wanted to look at treating or storing our water below the parking structure. As it turns out, our groundwater is far too close to the surface.
About four feet?
Yes, thank you. So there's no room for us to push that water underground. It's already wet, and we can't infiltrate it into the ground there. As you move west, especially, I'm sorry, east, especially east of the existing building, as you get out to the edge of France Avenue, you're at the edge of the old gravel pits. Soils are great, and we can infiltrate water there underground. So that will be an underground cistern, so to speak, but it's a different type of buried structure.
Okay. So your stormwater plan then is a combination of green space, these stormwater ponds, and some underground utilities?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So finally, I have on the table here something we did not have for Planning Commission, and that was a graphic. We brought a very simple sketch that evening, but we were left with a lot of questions as to what will the building be? And I realize that, yes, this is still very much a sketch, but it begins to allude to how that site will be developed or could be developed with the first phase of the Twin City Orthopedics building and parking structure. This is a view from the intersection of France Avenue and Minnesota Drive, looking west-northwest. This is an elevated view, of course. And slightly closer. You'll see, slicing through the middle of the image, is a covered walk. And again, this is going to be a very high priority, both for seventy-seven-hundred-France and Twin City Orthopedics, to provide this amenity for people that will be parking under or within the ramp to get to either entry, and people from either building to get back out to their cars, very simply, and in a covered, comfortable environment. So with that, I'm sure there's more to cover, but I'll field any questions.
Member Stewart, question for Mr. Amers?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Eric.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for all the work on the stormwater issue. I think this has been a very challenging issue, and I'm not sure, I know that engineering measurements and that kind of thing will have to be taken to address the issue, but I very much appreciate you working hard to take care of all of the rainwater runoff onsite as specified. So I think that's a good thing, and I want to just encourage sort of ongoing cooperation with the city and the city engineers to address the stormwater, because I know that that is a challenge here. Second, I want to turn back to the page with the sidewalk, the pedestrian walks highlighted. That's the one. That yellow strip across the top, perpetual public access, is that a sidewalk? Can bicyclists and pedestrians use that?
In this first phase, it's just an agreement. There's no usable space, other than the property dedication to that function.
And could there be one in that? Is there enough space for a sidewalk there?
There is enough space, but pragmatically, today, it really wouldn't work. If you follow my finger here, this short section of north-south boundary is laden with utilities. There's light poles, power lines, and a significant grade change. And as you traverse westward from that inside corner, the conditions are virtually identical. There's about a four- or five-foot grade transition, thick brush, volunteer trees, utilities. And so today, with a lot of dollars, it could be done, but it's being proposed pending, again, participation from the other side of the boundary.
I'm mindful of pedestrians and cyclists who are coming eastbound off of West Seventy-seventh Street, sort of run right into that corner of the site, and, you know, they either have to get around it to the north or get around it to the south, or if they could ideally traverse on that yellow line, that might be a convenient thing for them. But if it's not possible, then it's not possible.
Understood.
I also want to ask about the, on the stormwater ponds, does the water move? I wouldn't want that to become stagnant and have algae buildup and things like that. So what, how do you deal with water to ensure that it remains a nice amenity rather than a hyssore?
Yeah, that's a great question. And of course, people that have stormwater ponds all over wrestle with that question all the time. I think the pond at the entry, middle of the south site, would have a fountain or aerator in it, and we would use that in part with regular maintenance to quell any kind of unsightly issues related to that pond. As we move to the west, we actually have two types of ponds. The first one you come to, immediately south of the southeast corner of the new building, is a shallow rain garden pond. That transitions to a deep-water pond, which would always hold water, not unlike the entry pond, and then back to rain garden, shallow rain garden along the curving extension of West Seventy-seventh. The shallow rain garden ponds may not always have water in them, and they would be lined with a combination of rain garden plantings, boulders, so that when they're dry, they still have, you know, a positive visual appearance. The deep-water pond, right at the intersection corner, would always have water in it. We would probably be circulating that as well, try to keep it clean.
And that deep-water pond would, I don't think this design would permit it, but it might be an interesting amenity to consider putting an ice rink there in the wintertime.
Possibly. It's a little small, but possibly.
Well, you might have to shift things a little bit, but I noticed there's a sport court now at the back end of the parking garage.
There is.
I'm a basketball guy, so that's more for me, but it's only half-court.
Yes. Sorry.
Can you stretch that out a little bit?
Still for you.
All right. And then, and I'm wondering if there shouldn't be a pedestrian entrance to the building. So for pedestrians who are coming north on that street from whatever that street is to the west there, yeah, if they want to, there's no pedestrian access. Do we need a little footbridge across the water to the building so that they could enter on that side, or do you really just want to route them around the outside?
Well, we really do. We want to have them hit one of the three dedicated entrances. There's actually a service entrance as well on the northwest corner, but the north will be a dedicated care suite entry, the inside corner, the main building entry, and then the physical therapy wing that stretches out toward the east will have a minor entry.
I also want to comment on the green space. I think you guys have made a good effort to expand and enhance the green space. I would encourage you, if you can do even more, that's not a bad thing. It's still, particularly until Phase Two gets built, you've still got quite a lot of asphalt over there in the north end. That's all for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Stewart. Member Brindle.
Thank you. Just a couple things. We had a great talk when we visited about this a few weeks ago. And looking at the Phase One and Phase Two, and the various uses that are planned for Phase One, and then eventually, do I have this right, eventually the uses that would come into Phase Two would kind of show themselves as time goes on, and Phase Two would then be built to accommodate the uses that come up, that you find you need more space for this, or?
That's correct. As Aaron indicated, when they first built at Crosstown...
Right.
There was no way they could anticipate they'd ever need eighty thousand square feet. And there they were, outgrown already in three years. And so the potential for this site, as Aaron indicated, the biggest draw was the expandability, the potential for expansion, not even knowing what it could be, but knowing that the likelihood is very, very high in a short number of years that it may be required.
All right. And I don't have a problem with the pedestrian movement in the site. And I like that what will end up, I think, maybe even being a mezzanine level that you walk through the current building, which makes it accessible from France Avenue back to this building.
That's right.
The pedestrian movement that I think, if I were walking here, I need to get in here at one of the entrances where the cars come in. So I would be looking at, if I'm a pedestrian, I'm coming in where cars come in, and there isn't an obvious walkway for me. So if I'm on France and I'm coming in here and walking, with the number of apartments in the Southdale Area, it very well could be that you're going to have people walk here. And so I'm looking at, how are they going to get in here and be protected from the drive lanes?
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, we've looked so hard at developing our access to the new building and connecting the two, but we've left, for the most part, what's existing as we get further But we've, we've left, for the most part, what's existing as we get further east on the site. And so we could examine potentially a walk coming off of France as well.
To make it obvious that cars enter here and pedestrians enter here, just to have a separation for safety? Now, people come in here with broken legs and ankles and knees and hips. And so most everybody is likely going to be driving in here, at least until they get well.
That's right.
But, but just looking at it being accessible for the future, I anticipate that your business is going to grow and thrive and be here and continue. And, and we love that. But should you decide to be something bigger in another part of Edina and vacate this, we would want this to accommodate and be welcome and accessible to whoever comes after you. You're likely going to be it. But nonetheless, you know, you kind of have to think about what's going to happen in 40 years.
Right.
And, and so making sure that what we do here accommodates today but has that eye toward what is coming. Any permeable surfaces anywhere, like the sport court?
You know, not currently. That's not part of, of the current plan. Again, we could, we could investigate that, but
I'm just curious. I don't know how a sport court would work with a permeable surface.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not convinced in parking lots. They, they require quite a bit of maintenance. I have a couple of permeable parking lot experiments that I'm kind of watching that other cities have done. And, and there, I mean, they're taking care of them like you would your living room carpet. And so that does not really work here very well. It's an expensive proposition still. It's not been perfected to the point where it's flexible enough and usable enough that it can just be. So, but that said, I always want to push the envelope a little bit and see, see what we can do. So this is about 100% more green space than is currently there since there's none. So
Just about.
I'm not complaining. So slope of the, slope of the parking lot? The at-grade parking lot, is that slope to push the stormwater into the green areas?
The slope?
The slope of the parking lot. Does it slope toward the green areas?
Oh, yes.
To get the water into those green areas?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't understand at first. Yes.
Sorry.
Currently, the southwest corner of the site is the flood containment area for the entire property.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it naturally drains to that southwest corner. So that's why we're going to set that up as our deepest water stormwater management area.
When you were describing the rain garden areas, so you're, you're putting in something that's called a dry creek bed? Basically a dry creek bed where it can exist and be beautiful as a dry creek bed. It'll fill with water and it has that, you've done a perk test
Bio-based.
in the area. And so you know how long it's going to take for the water to disappear?
Yes.
That's, you know, it's two days, four hours, whatever it is?
Yes.
All right. I love the walkway. Thank you for doing that. And the covered walkway. And just the peek at what this could look like? That one piece of paper that you put up that we don't have? I just find that beautiful. So I just wanted to let you know that I love the levels, the, the windows. No, not that one. That doesn't have levels. The next one. That one. I like that one. So that's building, now is that the current building?
Yeah.
Am I looking at the current building?
This is Fidelity Investments,
Okay, okay.
which we built in 2005.
So I'm complimenting you on a building that's sitting there right now.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So you're still, okay, so we're still looking at conceptual blocks back there?
That's correct. I'm going to point, here is the parking deck.
Yeah.
Two levels, covered walk, covered walk, and proposed structure.
Okay, great. That's Phase One structure.
Correct.
All right, so let's dream out a few years. Phase Two structure would be to the right of that or to the north. And it could be taller than that.
It would very likely be much taller than that, in the footprint area we have to work within, yes.
Okay, just getting an idea. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Brindle. Member Swenson?
So how many stories is that building?
Well, if it's 60,000 square feet, it'll be three stories. And if it's 80,000 square feet, it'll be four. And, and, excuse me, either structure would require a penthouse level atop, so that's why you see a little extra extension on that block.
Go to the picture of your sidewalks. On the area where you have the shallow rain garden, there is no sidewalk along there? Is there a potential to build a sidewalk along there? Is there enough width to build a sidewalk along there?
I have to be honest. Because the stormwater management is still in design, we may need that entire area.
West side.
Okay, so possible potential. Should I add another word to it? Okay. The, you know, when we work in the city, we have areas we say have missing sidewalks. To me, you have a missing sidewalk where Fidelity will hit this new sidewalk down on the south. Or if there's an existing one, I can't tell which is dark and which is light, but I think, so you're going to build a sidewalk along the south side?
Yes.
And yes, so there's the ability potentially to link that?
There is, but, but there's
Is there a grade change?
There's about four and a half or five feet of grade change there.
So then you get to an ADA issue?
Or steps, which, yeah.
Well, you'll just, what you discover is if you leave something like that and something changes in the neighborhood and all of a sudden people are doing their banking and they're crossing the street and then you have a little Ho Chi Minh Trail across there. I was just trying to avoid the Ho Chi Minh Trail. To the north, where your sports courts are, there's that street that kind of comes through from your neighbor. I wouldn't call it a street, but it's an access.
Yes.
And for me, it's actually a street because if I look at the Southdale study and their principles, it is taking mega blocks and bringing them smaller. So to me, that brings it smaller. So I would at least like the sidewalk somehow to continue out to that part. Right now, it's got a big zigzag around the sports court and then you have to go over to the existing building of 7700 and then you can cross back, but it's, it doesn't ever make it to the north boundary.
Okay.
I would appreciate it making it to the north boundary. I never know what's going to happen. It's good to plan ahead. Who's using the sports court?
Well, it's, it's
For the people that haven't gotten knee replacements yet?
Correct, yeah. Its purpose is really twofold. It's an amenity to the site, but it could also be utilized as a therapy component for TCO.
And then there's something existing now too, if I look at Google, or two white things just south of that. What are those?
1.2 megawatt electric generators.
They're not moving?
They're not moving.
Okay. Okay, then just south of that, if you look at level, the grade level, that, that, that drive aisle that has the egress and ingress easement written on it, but it's a drive aisle, so
Yes.
And that goes all the way to 7700.
That's correct.
When you build the ramp, will you be able to continue to drive all the way through there?
Yes, you will.
That won't be blocked off in any way, will it?
That will not be blocked off.
Because I would not want it blocked off in any way because I think, again, that takes a bigger space and makes it smaller.
Absolutely.
So I like that. Care, you, you didn't, but you mentioned care suites. So are you building care suites into this first Phase One?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and we're talking overnight care suites?
That's correct.
So that when I have my second knee done, I can stay there, is what you're telling me? That's right. I actually agree with Carrie T. that I would rather see this as a PUD than a Phase One and Two. You're kind of the poster child for the first one that we're really working on that's big enough to work on it. You know, not just the BP station on the corner of 70th and France.
Yes.
And so, you know, we really, I think the principles are pretty sound. I think the walkability and trying to break this face down makes sense. I think it will make sense to people that work there and people that go there too. I like where you located the building. I'm fine with it being on that corner, actually. I think they want visibility. I would want visibility if I were them. I like the ramp being on the middle. I'm fine with that. I agree with Member Brindle. The covered walkway kind of connects it all together. I agree that you need better entrances. Going into TCO now, it depends on which, where you are in the ramp, where you go in. And then if you take the elevator, have you gone to the right place? And you're immediately confused. So this should solve that. Yes, there's more green space, but I wouldn't tell you there's a lot of green space. But if at any point that you feel you are overparked, there's always opportunities to cut up long rows of parking. However, the medical office building will do that very effectively on its own. I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good comments. Let me just try to build on those. And maybe before I do, if you can, if you can slide this, this particular one over a little bit so it's the whole thing is on the
Oh, sorry.
There we go. So walk me through a little bit as you come off of Minnesota Drive. Customers to the Phase One, how, how are they going to access that building? How do you envision people coming in to use it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that, we anticipate, will be the primary point of access to the site is, is off of Minnesota. And having this water component there was not in our initial design, but it turns out it's going to be a great amenity, I believe, at the entry. And right behind that will have a small monument of some type that will not only be identification but also wayfinding. And it'll be a, hopefully, a beautiful sculptural element in and of itself. But we see people turning to the west and if they've been here before and coming for physical therapy, they'll, they'll stop here, drop off, and enter the minor entry that faces the east at the end of the PT wing. If they're coming for the first time, one of the reasons we held the building away from the ramp is to provide great visibility between the two so that first-time visitors could enter the site and see immediately that there's more parking beyond. The canopy stretching out from the main entrance will invite them back. They'll know that this is a point of entry. And so as they get to this point, they'll know to turn to the north. And they can either park immediately in the field or if they're dropping somebody, make a loop and we'll have a covered drop off on the east side here as well.
And will those be two different types of users, the ones who might be on the north side of that island versus the south side of that island?
Yes, yes.
So people, depending on what you're coming for, you'll try to funnel to one location or another?
Orthotics or one of the other offices, you may come in through the main entry.
Okay.
And then once dropping someone at that main entry and you begin driving to the east again, you'll have an access below the ramp immediately ahead of you, or you can return to the surface field to the north. There will also be a dedicated care suites entrance here on the south, on the north side, excuse me. And again, that'll be covered out to the walk so that people can pick up and drop off right there at the care suites entry. And family members can park immediately on the north and enter directly into that portion of the building.
So then, can you put up the second phase?
Yes.
Now, just to look at the other side of the site in the northeast corner along France Avenue was a, a restaurant project. Is that where, what's the status of that?
Mr. Mayor Councilmember, so that, that project, the entity involved with that is not proceeding with that plan. So in light of where we're at today, we will move away from that concept of a development on that site. So we're focusing here on, you know, much larger multi-phase development.
But in theory, you could do something there in the future as well, along France.
That's possible. We come back and talk about that within the context of the beauty.
Okay. Then can you, can you just briefly give me a sense? Because I did spend an hour and watched the presentation in front of the planning commission. I thought there was a really good discussion.
Yeah.
Can you give me just a quick overview of what changed from the planning commission to now?
Yeah, well, again, one of the biggest changes was the reduction in overall site parking and clarity added to the pedestrian circulation. We, we spent a lot of time making sure that all of our pedestrian routes, especially internally, we're going to line up, we're going to fall under covered walks, we're going to serve our north-south access with, in conjunction with additional green space. So we added more green along the west side of the parking structure and the south and augmented that covered east-west walk in detail. And we also pulled the entire structure about 25 feet to the east. And that allowed us to broaden both the green space and accommodate
So you added the water features and that. So I know there was some discussion about the notion of pulling the parking ramp up to Minnesota Drive.
Yes.
And I remember in the conversation, the concern was a visibility for TCO. Is that, is that the reluctance of bringing it forward?
That's one main reason. We left it back. Again, visibility and, and on-grade access to the three points of the structure is a very, very high priority.
Okay. So I'm, I'm in the, I, I think the PUD is the right approach as well. And when I think about the Southdale framework and the notion of taking these super blocks and trying to put them into smaller pieces, yes, part of it is to create pedestrian ways, but I think it's also designed to create scale. And you've got nice scale here. What I'd like to see as it evolves is, and I, and I like the fact that the parking, I don't even mind the fact that it's not up to the curb so long as whatever ends up being the facade with your overhang, you know, your covered walkway, if you will, that that's, that that's a, you know, aesthetically pleasing front to that facade that doesn't look like your garden variety parking ramp.
Right. We, we envision that, that canopy to, to, to enliven that facade. Not only with pedestrians that it's going to invite, but just the detail of that structure.
And so what I, what I would suggest, I mean, we're drawing lines on paper here, trying to create these smaller blocks, both north-south, two north-south lines. One is the, the drive aisle that exists between 7700 France and the future parking ramp. The other is, is this subdivision line just to the west of the parking ramp. I, I would encourage you to emphasize those so long as you have a theory that is separation of this parking from the TCO building. Highlight that and then use the ribbons of green and the covered walkway across to tie it together. But I think it's, it's more than just having sidewalks. I think it is, I think what folks who've been working on that are really trying to accomplish is a feel of different segments. So it doesn't feel like a long walk of sameness along here. It's almost like you're encountering a street. And, and I would do some things along that drive aisle between 7700 and the parking ramp to, to figure out how you might make it feel more like a boulevard. Make it feel like it is a street, even if it's a private drive aisle. And then the same, you know, I, I like the idea that we're setting up on the northern perimeter as well a possibility. I want to, I, I I want to see more there and think more about how that matches up to create, again, that division that feels real from the worm's eye view, if you will. If you're a pedestrian, you're experiencing this or you experiencing, it's, it's more than just having a sidewalk. It's, when do you feel like the, the block breaks up? And it will then, I think, be self-policing on the scale of what gets put on the, on the site. What's the plan for the second phase medical office building in terms of height? medical office building in terms of height?
Well, what, what we've illustrated here is, is a 20,000-square-foot floor plate. So, if...
So, that's scalable. I mean, you just talked about how the future is now X number of years after you thought you were set for life at the 62 site. So, it could be...
It could be 10 stories.
Right. So, I'm, I, I think, to me, the Southdale framework discussions have acknowledged that density can be valuable and have policed the scale of that density by using these divisions. And I would just encourage you to be more than lines on paper, to really create legitimate separations that make it feel to the user like you're changing to a different environment as you, as you move along that area. The one last thing that I would suggest, we all think about, from the Southdale framework that was mentioned at the planning commission, as well as this whole notion of district parking, there was some discussion about not putting too much parking on it. It looks like you've got a ramp that you're going to try and scale, so that if you need to go up, you can go up. But maybe there's also ways to think about how that serves the sub-region, if you will, if there is excess parking. And I don't know, if it sounds like I'm vague about that, it's because I am. I don't know exactly what that means, but I think that's part of the broader concept in the Southdale district planning, is, is how do we find these pockets of parking that then serve subregions? You know, we're talking about pedestrians perhaps, perhaps crossing France to access Centennial Lakes from this site. And so, there's a variety of different ways we want to tie all that together. So, a lot of kind of random thoughts. I, I think the, it's a terrific place for the use, and I like the way you're thinking about it. I'd just encourage you to keep being bold about making the divisions there.
Thank you, thank you.
I think my colleagues have made some very great comments. It's not easy leading the way on a big parcel. You've got a 17 acre, 17-acre piece here. There's a large building in the front with that small Fidelity Investment Building, but the, the back half of it, with all of its infrastructure challenges, there's a reason it hasn't been developed yet.
That's right.
Yeah. But, so this is a wonderful thing, I, I believe. So, and I think you're, you're paying attention to infrastructure. Infrastructure is always critical with respect to every project. But here in particular, with that high-water table and all the other challenges that you've got with soils back in this area, I like the way you're thinking through these things with respect to stormwater storage, the other things that you need to accomplish. I like the way you've set the parking back from Minnesota Drive. I still like the idea, and I think this will help, as you mentioned, that you've got this beautiful walkway. And I, I think of the, the covered walkway that we asked Meyer Lee to do over at their project. What a nice sensation it is as you walk towards the store and away from the store. Whether, you know, no matter what the weather is, it's, it's a nice feeling and you're elevated off the, off of grade to kind of protect yourself from the traffic. The skin idea, though, I think is still an important one, especially on the north and the south sides. On 76th Street, where you get close to the street with the, with the butt end of the parking ramp, you know, having some kind of a skin on that that isn't going to make it look like a traditional parking ramp is another way to lead the way out in this area as we, as we start making this transition from a suburb built on the basis of an automobile, which we're still going to have to use, of course, extensively. You can do some wonderful things here. And I think Member Staunton did a nice job of pointing out that you are making every effort to follow those principles that the Southdale Task Force put in place, and I commend you for that. One of the things that I was wondering about is, in a perfect world, this may be more from Mr. Johnson, when would you expect to go to Phase 2? Because I feel like, as we sit here and visit with you, we should be looking at the Phase 2 map and assuming that certain things are going to happen. You're going to eventually run out of baby boomers, but the millennials are going to come along at some point in time, and they're going to need a lot of help. So, what do you, what do you think the timing is to go from Phase 1 to Phase 2, your best guess?
I think, Mayor Hovland, the answer is, it depends. I think we're still evaluating opportunity for a potential surgery center on the site there. And if, if that comes to fruition, Phase 2 becomes much more real in terms of having a true medical office building with other specialties served, other tenants with other physician groups in town. So, that's, that's really what, you know, what will help us make that decision as it relates to an orthopedic standpoint. You know, the planning commission posed a question last month whether we'd ever envision us vacating our existing space off of 62 in France. And I think I'd rather quickly answer, absolutely not. I mean, that is a, a very visible location for us that many people identify with as, as Twin Cities Orthopedics beyond just the southwest metro. So, that said, you know, we continue to grow. We're out of clinic space. So, we, I guess it is feasible that we could shift some of our clinic space to, to that site as well as part of the Phase 2 addition.
Okay. One of the things Member Swenson mentioned kind of hit home to me, and that is, is in our quest for green, more green space, when I look at the differential on parking between Phase 1 and Phase 2, it's 176 surface lots, if my math is right. And it makes me wonder about if Phase 1 goes first, obviously, and Phase 2 doesn't happen for a while. I thought I heard you say that you were overparked. And I'm wondering if we could create more green space to the north of the Phase 1 building. And I don't know what the parking requirements are, but when I look at the Phase 2 medical office building, you know, after Phase 1 is constructed, I'd much rather look at green space back there than, than surface parking lots, or surface parking stalls, I should say. And you've got 317 spaces per level on the ramp. And I know this is probably a sensitivity for front shoe companies as developer, but it almost makes me think about the wisdom of thinking more about the parking structure, adding more space there now and putting green, more green space north of the building to create a more park-like effect. And that would also help with what Member Staunton was talking about in terms of, of taking that superblock and, and cutting it up. You almost, you almost would end up with a pocket park back there until you get to Phase 2. Something worth thinking about anyway. And you'll have to look at the economics of it, but if that makes any sense.
Even if you don't have a pocket park, putting in divisions between the two long rows of parking, so that you've got green, kind of like what Target did.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right, what we had Target do.
They convinced us they were overparked, and they put more green between their parking places, and I'm glad they did.
I'm a fan of the PUD on this particular piece of property as well. I feel like we've worked well with the people that have come to us with the idea of using PUD and this whole give-to-get proposition. You know, we see a lot of things here that you're giving to get a PUD in advance of even trying to figure out what kind of zoning you want for the area. So, I think that's something else for you to think about. But green space, non-motorized movements, you've thought about some of these things, intra, intra-site movements, external site movements, all those things, more and more important. I do think if you can figure out a way to extend that sidewalk along the west side to create more connectivity, that might be something well worth considering, as Member Swenson says. What you want to be doing here, it seems to me, is you want to be thinking about things that are going to benefit this site forever. In this, in this changing world that we're in, where people are trying to move around in different ways and trying to experience more nature in a city and, and find more peaceful places, you know, these are the things that will, for the developer, too, if, if they continue to own this building or whoever owns this building, you know, those are the things that'll make it more viable long into the future for whoever the occupant is. So, keep, keep that generally in mind as well.
We will.
All right. Those are my comments. Anything else from councilmembers? Member Brindle?
I'll just add, I didn't mention anything about the PUD, but we did talk about that when we were together, in that I think the PUD is going to give the greatest flexibility for this to, for the zoning to tailor to this site. So, I, I would be in favor of that. And then, am I correct that you've worked with the watershed, or you're currently working with the watershed, and that has created some of the, some variety of these changes that we've seen?
That is true. And I should have mentioned that when Councilman Stewart first talked about engineering. That was another step we took in between the planning commission meeting and, and our trip back to the drawing board, so to speak, as we met with both city planning and engineering staff and the watershed district onsite, not only over plans, but we walked the site. And we looked at specifically some of the issues that, that impacted how we set up our plan that you, you see tonight, and the, the north boundary being one of them and the difficulties that come with that, and, and how we're going to best address stormwater on the site and, and the flood requirement that we have to, we have to contain at the southwest corner, all of those issues. So, that was a very productive meeting.
I just, one other point. I'm thinking about the north side. I understand the point you're making about, you know, doing your half of it and then waiting for those other sites. You know, as you think about that northwest corner, it's not a far stretch to the corner of the Pentagon Park property with one in between. And you could certainly envision over time how that might be residential to mixed use to this office space and that pedestrian way becomes even more important. So, the question I would ask is whether 10 feet is enough for half. And I, and I don't know what the answer is, but I'd encourage you to work with staff to think about. I get the, I get the fairness of you do your half, the properties next door do their half, but what is the width that we want of that pedestrian way? Is 20 feet sufficient, or is it a 30-foot kind of dedication? What's the, what's the magic number there? Thinking about what that pathway might look like that is really going to, again, make it a significant enough feature that people see a separation there and use that separation.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope that was helpful.
It was.
Next matter in this portion of the agenda is a discussion on the continuation of the discussion on Partners in Energy Electricity Action and Memorandum. And our environmental engineer, Ross Bittner, has this matter. Mr. Bittner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, councilmembers. I've got a brief presentation for you today. As the mayor said, I'm Ross Bittner. I'm the environmental engineer with the city. With me today, sitting in the front row, is Yvonne Pfeiffer with Excel Energy, and Sarah Zarin, who is on our Partners in Energy Planning Team, is also the chair of the Energy and Environment Commission. And you've already been introduced to our new sustainability coordinator, Dara Brown. The, the team that made up, I'm going to briefly introduce the plan, the planning team, the process that we went through. I'm going to talk a little bit about the highlights of the plan, talk about how it separated out the big goal of 30% reduction of greenhouse gases by 2025 into smaller, manageable pieces. Talk a little bit about plan implementation and the implementation team that's in front of you today. There's two documents in your packet. One is the Partners in Energy Plan, the draft plan that's looking for your approval tonight. The other is the memorandum of agreement with the Excel Energy that defines a level of support that they're going to be able to provide. So, the planning team. I was part of a planning team. These are the members not pictured. Were a couple other members. Someone had to hold the camera. This team of, of people was made up of representatives from the school district, city, both engineering and finance, business representatives, Excel Energy, and other energy and outreach experts. They led us through a five-week, or a five-component planning process, where we struggled with a lot of the issues around carbon reduction and energy efficiency. It was a fun time and, but it was also a learning experience for a lot of us as we, as we got into a lot of details. And we worked from the really high-level focus areas that you see in the plan, all the way down to specific strategies and actions that, that we would propose to try to, to eat that elephant one bite at a time. The plan, after it was done, went on to the Energy and Environment Commission for its review and comment. Those comments are in your, your packet as well. But here's the summary at the really high level. This goal, the goal that the plan takes is in alignment with the City of Edina Comprehensive Plan. It calls for a 30% reduction in carbon by 2025. It splits that, that whole city, you know, you're drawing a boundary around the entire municipal, the municipality, and you try to reduce carbon among all the participants in there, outside of just city operations, but also in the commercial sec, in industrial sectors and the residential sector. So, it splits them up to try to, to provide a little bit more focus to each one of those areas. And on the highest level, it uses two strategies. One is conservation, use less energy or get more use out of the energy that you do use. And then, for the energy that you use, try to make it cleaner by switching to renewables. It tries to make measurable and specific goals for each sector that can be checked in with the planning team from time to time, and then reported out at the end of the planning, at the end of the implementation process. And it focuses on getting the tools, the education into the right hands, outreach to the different participants in the community, and providing, and making people aware of the incentives that already exist through Excel Energy's existing programs. So, the implementation team, when we start to get into who's going to do the work, this is going to be led by the sustainability coordinator. Feel kind of awkward up here on our second, on our second day telling someone what they're going to be up to, but we've been working on this for almost a year now. And it's good to, it's good to have someone who has a lot of experience in this and, and can help. Other city staff, we've already got a lot of things going on that are referenced and talked about in the plan with our building facilities and the work that Tim Barnes is doing that you're seeing in the capital plans. We've made a lot of connections through the planning process with Excel, and they've made some commitments on what they're willing to do and the resources that they're willing to put up to help continue to, to work on our project management and work on our connections together. The Energy and Environment Commission is very excited about this. They've already started to advertise their working groups and form their working group structures around the planned sector elements. And they've created sector-specific working groups. So, let's talk a little bit about the sectors and the goals. The commercial sector is, is one of the largest sectors of energy use at 67%. This would look at a 2% annual electric reduction or offset
Yeah, I think so.
to get greener.
What's the school?
The residential sector is, is another big goal of having almost doubling participation in the, in Excel's programs and doubling the wind source green energy participation as well. And leading by example, it talks about a lot of municipal possibilities by getting to a 7% reduction in greenhouse gases in 18 months. While this plan can live on and will take new forms after the 18-month implementation period, it's really a one-and-a-half-year plan, and it's going to be quick. So, how do we, how do we do some of those things? The plan starts off right after council approves the plan or in the MOU, and it rolls into targeted, meaningful, and measurable, meaning immediate actions. It measures the progress and outcomes with continual check-ins with the project team, starting off with, you know, an every-two-week meeting on the project team level. And then, it builds on those early successes and starts to think about how to, to get some of the bigger picture, longer-term actions into place. The report results, we, we report results after 18 months and during that implementation period. We, and then we reassess the tactics, figure out what worked, what didn't, leave what didn't by the side of the road, and pick up what worked and keep on going with it. As you can see on the graph on the right, you know, we know, we know a lot from the Excel data, and targeting is going to be a big part of this because we want to use our effort... and targeting is going to be a big part of this because we want to use our effort most So that's our brief introduction. You have the plans in front of you. I'm available for questions, as well as the members of the EEC and Excel Energy. We're all here for you. And I just wanted to thank everyone that I worked with, and it was a very valuable and exciting time to get that community support.
Thank you. Member Staunton, your comments as part of the team.
Well, I just wanted to start by thanking you, Ross, and Sarah, and all the folks who worked on this, Excel, for their leadership on it. I was a liaison, kind of watching the process more than participating in it. It was terrific work by a number of really enthusiastic and dedicated stakeholders in the community to make real steps forward on creating a strategy, and I'm really pleased with where we're headed. Just a couple of questions, if I might. You know, there's a lot of where we, a lot of your presentation talked about measurable, and that is part of our task here, is how do we, you know, the goal is to get 30% reduction by 2025. And I think one of the things that I learned watching the processes, there's a lot of different units of measurement that none of us has good intuitive sense for. I learned in one particularly revealing moment how many kilowatts per hour I was using at my house compared to everybody else. I didn't know it was a lot until I heard how much everyone else was using. So I'm wondering what, if anything, we are aiming toward in terms of a dashboard, or a thermometer, or whatever the right tool is to show how we're, how are we going to know? How are we going to know that we're making reductions? And how are we going to measure those? And how can we help residents and businesses in the city know the consequences of steps that we're taking? Whether that be, you know, we could be doing great work in reducing consumption, but then over here doing something that's going to add consumption back in. And if we have a good dashboard for that, we'll have a sense of it. And I wonder if there's been any discussion, or if that's the next step, or how that all fits in.
Thank you, council member. That appears in the plan. There's not a lot of detail around it, but right now, in the plan, it describes community-wide energy use in the electric sector. We can already break it down with Excel's data between the different sectors that are called out in the plan. And they can go further than that, too, and actually get down to the participant level. So whoever is, you know, touched by the outreach efforts and, you know, signs up or chooses to engage, they can track all of the different additional signups because they have, you know, on a per-customer basis, understanding of how many people or businesses use each one of the conservation and sustainable renewable energy practices that they have. So a lot of that measurement is going to be coming from the Excel side of the team. And the city also has kind of an outside track of that through our participation in the Regional Indicators Initiative, which is also Excel data, but through a third party.
And I think that's the challenge as we move forward, is to keep refining. It's not necessarily the access to the data, because it sounds like there's a lot of data from a lot of different sources. But how do we collate that into a, something that you can easily convert to say, yes, we're doing well here, we're not doing well there, or I can go in and say, yeah, I'm doing well here and not doing well there?
I take your point now. So on the individual level, or on the city or the council level, a lot of the plan talks about external engagement, and that includes building a project website in partnership with Excel so that we can get down to that month-by-month or quarter-by-quarter tracking so that you can see the progress that we're making.
Terrific. Well, thanks again for your work.
Yeah, go ahead. Chair Zarin, would you like to make any comment with regard to this matter and the work that you've been doing over the past few years?
Am I on? Yes. Yeah, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Well, it becomes, it is very important because we need to quantify this. And so we have a quantification at the level of customers, which is private information. It cannot, it is not for anyone, just a specific customer. It can be, you know, business or residence. Then we have collective data, which is, we have a database, we have been collecting these since EEC was formed, 2007. So we have the regional indicator that tells us a dyna overall consumption of gas, water, electricity is this. So starting this implementation next year or six months from now, then we can look at that data collectively. We are talking about collective reduction, 30% by 2025, but also we can look at it by the help from Excel Center as an individual level as well.
And when I think about the standards that you have for performance personally, do you feel comfortable that with the strategy that we have in place that we have a strong chance of becoming that much more energy efficient and having a 30% reduction in our energy consumption by 2025?
I think so. I'm very hopeful person always, and with what I have seen so far, I, with effort from the city level and at the operation management at the city, and city staff, as well as the council and the mayor, I think if we bring the energy to the community and ask them to be a partner with us, rather than we are telling you to do this. So we need a partnership with businesses and residents. I'm very hopeful we can make it. And one simple example is, as council member Staunton mentioned, at one of the meetings, one eye-opening for all of us, and we are much into reduction of GIG, was they asked us, okay, next time bring your electric bill. I had no clue what is my consumption. So when we went there, so they asked us, and, you know, those of us, you know, we revealed it. Then I compare mine with council member Staunton and other people. It was really eye-opening. Then we realized, well, if you, that is what renewable energy is part of, one of the residential commitment, if we can achieve the goal, it is 750 residents in a dyna, which to me is very low, but with campaigning and education, we are trying to double it annually. So it was that if you subscribe to renewable energy at Excel, we can substantially reduce our GIG. So I, for one, I was subscribed 20%, then we changed it to 80%, and it is just $6 a month extra. So if every, let's say 50% of the dynas get 50% to 80%, we are going to be there.
Yeah, so they buy the renewables.
Buy renewable energy and conservation.
With a small additional cost.
Yes, exactly. So I'm very hopeful we can make it as long as we really do the campaign to be partner with residents and businesses, especially those top 20% businesses. Their consumption is 60% of top 20% businesses in a dyna. So if we really do a good campaigning, I'm very, very hopeful. It has been done in other cities. If they can do it, I'm sure a dyna can do it with all of your leadership and management.
Member Swenson.
That's a segue into the comment I was going to make, that if they do it in other cities, because there was a point when I read through all of your comments at the end, the last piece we got, and, you know, concerns about what could be successful and things you needed added into the report, there is this reference that other cities have already started implementation on this, and we need to follow up on that and see what's worked for them and what hasn't. So we spend our energies towards things that are more easily attainable first, and then work on the harder ones second. And I appreciated that idea that we're not redoing the wheel on this, that we can look at somebody else's wheel. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just add in, as a related plug, I just signed up for energy from our community solar garden at our house. So, you know, wind source is one renewable source, but the solar garden is an example of one, and hopefully if we can persuade businesses to host solar gardens, the school district perhaps, host solar gardens, that's another source and demand that we can create for cleaner energy.
Ms. Pfeiffer, would you come up too, please? I want to, when I saw the photo of the team, it's working on ways to reduce energy consumption in our community. To see Excel in there with our residents, working on a partnership basis, to try to figure out a strategy that would involve both conservation and the use of renewables, I was really proud to see you there and it put a smile on my face. And I want to, I want to thank you personally, and I want to thank you also as a representative of your company for caring enough about participating with the people in our town that are working so hard on making us more energy efficient.
We actually enjoyed the engagement with the community, and everyone that we work with, we learn more, and we build a much better relationship with our cities that are in our service territory. So we appreciate the opportunity.
And I'm sure they benefited from your presence as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments from council members?
Yeah.
Member Stewart, and then Member Bindel.
I'd just like to echo the thanks to the members of the task force that worked on this. The documents were pretty comprehensive, and I thought seemed to be a very thoughtful result that was reached, obviously through a lot of work and cooperation and some compromise. And thanks to Excel for participating, so, thank you.
Good. Member Bindel.
I have a couple of things. Ross, in the action plan, it makes reference to wind source and signing up for that, but it doesn't make reference to the solar garden, or did I miss it?
You didn't miss it, but there's a technicality with solar gardens that make the energy that comes out of them not a credit for the subscriber. It's a credit for the grid in general.
I see.
So when we actually got to kind of running the dollars and cents and the pounds of carbon, while it supports the grid, it didn't help any of the individual sectors. So it works, but not when it came to the math.
Well, a comment on, now, we signed up for the solar garden, and I think we've been getting our energy from wind source for, it's, I don't know, since the very beginning, it might be 10 years.
That's the renewable double play. You can sign up for both.
And, but no, as far as knowing how much you use, my husband's an engineer. He's a numbers guy. I think he just lives for numbers. I, on the other hand, just, I'm amused. But he keeps a spreadsheet, and he can tell you, he can tell me, sometimes he'll congratulate me, we've used less electricity this month. He knows what we did last year this month, he knows what we did this month three years ago, five years ago, so he's tracking what we're doing and periodically giving me a little reminder. But in looking at how can we attain the goal, it really is everybody looking at their own use. And, you know, we can preach, and we can try our best to keep everybody focused on it, but if we model good behavior and remind people that you guys are the only ones who know how much energy you use, and therefore, you're the only ones who can adjust it. And I don't know whether it's, you know, being that it's private information, we probably can't say, hey, we're going to issue a reward for, or an award for whoever does the biggest reduction in the next six months or something. But I don't know, but keeping our community focused on it, it's the broader community. It's the residential community, it's the commercial community, it's the public service sector, it's all of us keeping focused on what that goal is. But it's certainly doable, and it's certainly worth doing. But yeah, that, my big question was why I didn't see solar in here, so, thank you.
And again, Mr. Bittner, from a staff perspective, Member Staunton mentioned it, but you deserve a lot of credit for leading our city from a staff standpoint. We thank you very much for that as well. Some good work done on your part. All right, we, okay, we have a memorandum of understanding. Staff would like a...
I'll second.
Motion to adopt that MOU. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of its adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carrie. Yeah, good work. Looking forward to working with you more in the future.
Do we need to do the plan as well? Is the...
Well, it's in the plan and the memorandum, so I assumed that was the...
All right, so your motion reflects that. Great.
Yeah, I think the only action item was for us to approve the MOU. All right, well, I see the golf course crew back here. The next item on the agenda is the...
Fred Richards.
Oh, excuse me, Fred Richards first, I didn't get that one marked off here. Manager Neal.
Thank you, your honor.
Fred Richards' planning process, park planning process.
I'm carrying this one tonight. You may remember, some of you will remember pretty clearly, that back in, on March 18th, 2014, that was the night that the city council accepted a staff recommendation that had the backing of the park board to make some very fundamental changes to our golf enterprise. One of them, we'll get to in a moment. But the other one is before you tonight, and that is that we ceased operations, the recommendation was to cease operations of golf at the Fred and repurpose it into a park. So that action was approved on March 18th. On April 22nd, one of the things we had, got from the council that night was you wanted a pretty quick action to initiate a repurposing plan, a visioning plan for the park. So Ms. Catry and I met, we knew a consultant who had done several repurposing projects around golf courses, the Schoenbowers', and we engaged them on April 22nd. So we began that repurposing study fairly quick, in quick order. The repurposing study went most of the spring and the summer and the early fall of 2014, and was eventually resulted in a document that's in front of you tonight that looks like this. And this was the general purpose vision plan that came out of that process and was approved by the council on October 21st, 2014. It got a unanimous approval by the council. And then it has sat. One of the reasons it has sat is that we did not have the capital dollars ready to do that project at that time. The capital dollars would be connected somehow into the, probably, most likely into the Pentagon Park redevelopment when that occurs. But we did have, council wanted additional planning dollars to take that general plan into a more specific plan, and then to begin contract documents and et cetera. So you have been asking staff to begin that process, and so tonight, I'm asking you to consider four different ways we could do this kind of process, to select the consultant that we would use to kind of put the finish, to put the finished plan on the general plan. One of those is the non-competitive selection option. That's sort of what we did to produce this existing plan. Second would be a competitive RFI, RFQ, Request for Information, and Request for Quote. The third is a competitive RFP, and the fourth is a design competition, which we've discussed previously before, but have not had much experience with here. In general, these processes can take anywhere from seven to 25 weeks. There's an inverse relationship between the elaborateness or the breadth of the project or process and the speed in which it could be accomplished. My suggestion to you is that you authorize us to do a competitive Request for Proposal program, project, proposal, because we already have a council-approved vision plan for this project. So we have a general concept that we developed with a previous consultant, we developed with the neighborhood, we had a lot of interaction with the neighborhood, so they've seen this before, and they've had some ability to rely on it. But this is not good enough to just take out to bid. So that part of it, we need to move forward with, and that's what I'm proposing to you tonight. If you do that, I think we can have a selection process that would occur through the late summer... a selection process that would occur through the, through the late summer and culminate in the middle of October with a recommendation to you on who we should select to really put together a first-rate, very important park planning project for our city. And that's my recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
At this point in time, I've got a couple. Nobody else?
Go ahead.
Um, we've got this general vision plan and I think at the time we worked on this, I was a little bit reluctant to go that route, because I didn't want to have, happen what's happened here. But nonetheless, I, I did vote for this general purpose vision plan, because as you mentioned, it was approved by the council unanimously. We thought it would give, I think, the neighbors some comfort that we were moving something forward here. But what I, what I'm really concerned about, and I don't know if the method that you're recommending would get us where, where I think I'd like to go, and that is, we've got a 42-acre piece of property in the middle of an urban area that has now the chance to be re-envisioned as a state-of-the-art park with active and passive uses. And I don't know what those are. I mean, I don't know what's going on around the world that, that we need to know about in order to make a good decision about what this park could be and what this could mean to our town for the next 100 years. And if that's this RFP process, I'd like to have you tell me more about how that would work, because it seems to me that if you're doing an RFP, you've got to be telling somebody what you want. And I don't know how you go about telling them what you want. You want, do you tell them with more specificity? Do you tell them generally what you'd like to see? How do you get their creative involvement on a response? So, those are some of the things that, that I'm concerned about and want to make sure that we accomplish here, because this, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for all of us and a responsibility on the part of all of us to do something that's going to be in place for the next 100 years. We think about that in terms of land use development with buildings that we do with developers. And, and they have a life expectancy, maybe not quite as long as a park, but this, to me, in a way, seems even more, the gravitas of this seems pretty significant, just like it was with the golf course. And, and I just want to make sure that, that we know what all of our options are beyond having a general plan that says this part in the east side's good for active uses for field games. We could have some ponding in here and then the rest of it could be open recreational use. That doesn't make it for me. So, those are my opening comments here, as we talk about the best mechanism to get somewhere. And other council members may have comments. Member Stewart, I see you thinking that, taking some notes, and maybe you have some comments as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had, and I believe this is left on the dais for us. There is a sketch here. Is this worthy of discussion or, or is it premature?
That is, that is the...
No, that's the general plan that was adopted.
The loose structure of what was agreed on.
Yeah. It, I would not, I'm sorry, but I would not call it a plan. I would call it a vision.
Okay. So, a few things on this vision that I just wanted to ask about. This particular vision seems to have a lot of ponds in it, and I'm confident that it does not deal with rainwater runoff from any place other than within the footprint of this park. But, I'm confident that, that there will be those who want to criticize what we do at the city and what we do here at the council, because they'll say that we are taking rainwater runoff for the redevelopment going on at Pentagon Park and putting it on public land. And I just want to ensure that that is not the case. I, I do like water amenities, so I think some ponds are a good idea. I don't know if this is too big or too small. If we're gonna have a pond that's big enough, we ought to think about putting a hockey rink there in the wintertime, but that's one observation. Second, I, I don't know how many soccer, lacrosse, football fields fit in this field games area or baseball diamonds. I guess I'd like to understand that before we go forward. Just want to make sure that we have that sketched out. They, I, I think particularly this north panhandle part of the park is a little sensitive, because it is right in the midst of the neighborhood. So, I want to make sure we're thoughtful about how we use that. And then, parking, we also don't want to encourage parking in the neighborhood up at Sedum Lane and Kellogg Avenue. We want to ensure that, that most people who use the park are encouraged to park in actual parking lots. And, and yes, there may be other uses. We got some correspondence this week about a, what was the name of the game? A ball pit of some sort.
Gaga.
A Gaga ball pit. And, maybe it's a good idea to have something like that. I don't know. So...
Member Swenson.
Um, I think it's really important that we have this loose structure for that neighborhood when we close the Fred to golf. The Fred is about to get reopened though, for a bike trail in another, I don't know when they're, they're cutting the ribbon is for this southern part of this trail. But I walked part of it today and it's pretty exciting. So, we are gonna have some structure to it that is, in my opinion, permanent. We know from asking our residents that they do want walking in, in nature, and so that 60% kind of passive area answered that. Yes, there's ponding there today, if you were a golfer ever there. And as you heard from the Frouche people that are just a little bit to the east, this is a very low water table area. We aren't taking any water from our neighbors, but we are gonna need to hold water. And as we get rains that have made the water over my dock up north right now, that has sandbags on it, you never know. So, that's an opportunity that certainly we're not going to want to try to fill in, nor would the watershed ever allow us to do that. I do know that we have a need for field space, so I can't tell you how big that field space is, but I think personally it would be foolish, because we have a lot of families that live north of this and northeast of this. And we, and the northeast people don't really have a park of their own. Where the people north of this have the school park, the northeast people don't have a, a park, all those apartments and, that are along Park Lawn and other roads in there. So, I feel that this is an amenity that we are eventually going to offer for that group of people too. So, I think we do have a need for play space, is what I would tell you, whether it's the adventure player or what it is, but that was one of its possibilities. We also have a great building there that I would like to see it have some use after watching what happened with Tinfish. I'm not calling this another Tinfish, but with the regional trail right there and everything, I think it's an opportunity that we need to focus on. We already have parking there. I would like a better way into it, but if Mr. Tankenoff's projects happen to the south, we potentially have worked out an agreement with him, then we will have a different way into it. As to Mayor, your comment about an opportunity that we don't want to miss, you know, when I look at what we did at Centennial Lakes and the Promenade, that, to me, is a different kind of a park area than this. And I would say that Centennial Lakes and the Promenade wasn't very unusual in its time, and it's still unusual enough that people come and study it. I see this as certainly a draw, but a bigger draw maybe to the neighborhood around it than potentially what Centennial Lakes is, because the neighbors to the northeast right now are walking across France to go to Centennial Lakes, because that's really the only walkable park they have. So, I, I certainly would want this to, to be open and friendly to use for people that live in the neighborhood. Do I, do, do I see this as the Taj Mahal of parks? No. I see this as a really great functioning park, like Pamela is for us, like the whole Braemar complex with the dome and the lower. So, I'm actually supportive of Manager Neal's concept. And I'm, but I would want to encourage us to make sure that we continue to connect with the neighbors, both directly to the north, but also those neighbors in the apartment buildings, and make sure that we ultimately have something that works for that group of people, plus the general population and the bikers that will be coming through.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
So, something you said, Mr. Mayor, caught my attention, because I've said it many times, and that's the notion that this is a 42-acre park, and that feels like a really big parcel of land and a great opportunity. But I just was doing a little looking and realized that Pamela Park is 62 acres, and Highlands Park is 44 acres, and Braemar is 500 acres. So, that's a big piece of land. And so, I, I think we will need to consider the opportunity in the, in the scale that exists there. And I'm, I'm supportive of the recommendation that the city manager has made, but I think it's also important that we have stakeholders engaged in the process of selecting whoever we select out of that process, so that we're getting to what I think, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're driving at, which is how do we, how do we make the best of this opportunity? Because it is a, it is a moment where we're pivoting from a, a former use to a new use, and, and you don't really get a chance to do that several times over. You get one shot at that for a generation, and we should make sure we get it right. And I think if we get the folks who are stakeholders in that, that means a wide variety, you know? That's folks who are maybe on the park board, folks who are in the neighborhood, folks from around the community who are in tune with what we want to accomplish in our parks. I think we can, we can get the right assistance to, to get us to the right place.
Thank you. Member Brendel.
Thank you. Couple of things. I do see this as a vision, and a vision is kind of out there that it needs refining. I don't think it precludes looking at what is being done in another park in another state and in another country that is really cool and could be an amenity that would, would be, would be perfect for this location. I think it's the, as I look at this, I think it's a reality. It can be a reality that you have maybe a third of it is program space, and then looking at it from left to right, not total area. Where you have, because total area, it looks like it's about half program space and half totally non-programmed space, where it's just, it could be either left natural or it's got a variety of other, other amenities, but are, but are not programmed. I don't see the water table here as being low. I see it as being high. I don't think you have to dig very far before you're gonna hit water.
If I set it to reverse, I agree with you.
Oh, okay. All right. I believe that parks, and the golf course is a perfect example. Pamela Park is a perfect example. Parks are located where they are, because they collect water from the, from the neighborhood around it. And, and that is, that is a use for this 42 acres, that it serves its neighbors very well on all sides of the park. It, that's just, that's why these parks exist where they do. Braemar Golf Course is a perfect example. It's a beautiful golf course, and it's a wonderful watershed for that whole area around it. So, we can, you know, we can, we can point at it and say, you know, I don't want it to collect water from this side or from that side, but the purpose for, an underlying purpose for holding that green space is to do exactly that. And it does it well. It is a peat bog. So, whatever goes there is gonna have to function on something that is inherently moving and really quite wet. And so, that field space on the east, maybe we're getting out of the peat bog as we're looking at that eastern end of the park. I have no idea. But I don't know what the soils are there. But, but looking at field games area, I think that's something that, that we'll have to do some discovery on and find out what are the soils and will it support a field? Will it support a field any better than it supported a golf course? I hope so. So, we'll see. And it may be we'll need to bring in some fill in order to, to have a field be able to be reliably flat. As for, let me see. Okay. Stakeholders, I, I actually see a task force here. We've had plenty of demonstration from residents in our community that they are very interested in what happens to this park. And I think we would be, I think we would, we would gain a lot from having perspective from a wide range and of diverse task force to help determine what is gonna happen here and, and thereby having a wide diversity of stakeholders in the park. We've got, I don't know how many people live in the apartments in the Cedars at 76th and Park Lawn, but there's a lot of people there. There's a lot of kids there. And this is, if, if, if they've got a park, this is it. And so, we need to make sure that, that what is here will serve them, draw them to it, and be something that they'll appreciate and, and utilize. So, as far as the four options, I'm, I'm fine with number three. It's a competitive process. I think that's important. And, and it's one that has, has a pretty quick timeline on it. And so, it's, so I appreciate that. It'd be nice to have, at least have direction by the end of this year, which, you know, I, it, it really will be nice to know by the end of this year what our track is and what its timeline is. So, I'm okay with number three.
Manager Neal.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I can answer a few of those comments and questions. I'll start with Councilmember Brendel. Some of your questions are, are your comments. Some of what you're talking about is the how this work gets done.
Right.
And, and I'm really focused on this recommendation about who, how we pick who does that work.
Okay.
So, we may or may not be done with, or have this, or have a new plan ready to go by the end of the year. But what I'm suggesting here is we could, we could have a, a decision made about who's gonna do that work for us by the middle of October.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, regarding how far and wide we, we, you know, we, we put, we cast the net to that, we can do that as far and as wide as, as you're interested. We have a budget that we, we have established for the project. We want to stay as close to that as we can. In terms of, of how this person or this firm ultimately gets picked, however, the way I've outlined it in the proposal is that there'd be a recommendation to the park board, from the park board to you, and then council ultimately makes the, the call on who's gonna do this important project for us. So, I think from that standpoint, you will, you will have the final say on, on who's, who's gonna do this work and, and how we're gonna work with them. And part of what we want to look at when we are, when we're analyzing our options for who we're gonna choose, of course, is trying to look for people who are, who are skilled in doing inclusive processes and neighborhood outreach and that kind of thing, because that's important in all projects, park projects.
Thank you.
We would take, and let me just say, regarding the, the vision plan, what we would most likely do in terms of using this and also the, the vision plan, the document, which is some 27 pages, is we would share this with potential, potential consultants, and we'd say, this is, this is where the council was in 2014. You have water issues on the site. You have a regional bike trail on the site. You have restrictive, uncomfortable access to the site. These are all physical issues that everyone will have to deal with. And I would say we'd want to see how creative potential consultants could be as they figure out how to turn those hurdles into assets for this site.
Yeah. Good, good observation. I thought my colleagues did a nice job of pointing out what some of the, what some of the community needs are and some of the limitations on the property. Member Stewart, with respect to the, the water issue, I know the recent floodplain maps now have this entire park in the floodplain. So, it, it strikes me that one thing that we'd want to think about, from a neighborhood standpoint, I'm assuming if that park is in the floodplain, that more houses are now in the floodplain than ever were before. that more houses are now in the floodplain than ever were before, that maybe we can create with some water features, some storage capacity that will pull those neighboring,
To help them.
Help those neighboring houses get out of the floodplain, and we store the water over here, and we use that water in some very, very creative way.
Right.
Beyond just having something you can walk around, like we do at Centennial Lakes primarily. So anyway, I'm sure that we'll come up with some good ideas, and we have some very creative people on staff and also on the council that will be thinking about all kinds of ideas here as we proceed. So I'm comfortable, too, with the methodology as you've explained it, and what the purpose of that appointment would be, my only question would be, how did we appoint Mick Johnson to help with the task force down at Southdale? Did the task force itself have any input on who was hired? How did we do that?
They did. They actually conducted the interviews and were integral in selecting that consultant.
See, that's what I'm wondering about, is because that neighborhood was so impacted by the closing of the Fred. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have, to member Brendel's point, some kind of little task force that augments the park board, or is composed of part park board members, part neighbors, that go about doing these interviews.
I don't recall, Mr. Teague, did we give them options? Did they interview various consultants, or did we say, here's Mick Johnson, what do you think?
We interviewed a number of.
The task force did?
They did, yep.
I think that would be very wise, and they've got a lot of good thinkers on in that neighborhood that would be great members.
Has the potential to slow down the process a little bit, but if you're okay with that, we can still make this, we can still make it move as fast as possible.
Wouldn't we want a balance, though? Because I spoke for having the neighbors involved, too. But wouldn't we want some sort of balance between the park board and a neighborhood group, not at large? Because that particular neighborhood that talked about this was only the neighborhood to the north. I don't remember anyone in the Park Lawn neighborhood being on that. So I certainly could see putting together whatever
I agree with that, too.
You or Ann or came up with that had a couple neighbors from the north. If we can get at least one or two from Park Lawn along with either all of the park board or a group from the park board, I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
But I certainly want the park board as an integral part in picking this, don't you think?
Sure.
Maybe even a couple of folks from that nearby business community, or in the community at large, you know, think about how you want it to compose.
Well, the Burgundy is one place. There are people that live there.
Okay. We'll put that together, and we'll still function, we'll make this process function so that it comes to get a park board review before it comes to council.
I think that would be good. And then I will make a motion to all of that if everyone's comfortable.
Sure. You're making a motion to use the competitive RFP process proposed by
Yes.
the city manager for the Fred Richards Park planning process.
Thank you.
Okay. Second? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say nay? Carrie? Now, I got, I'm in the right part of the agenda. We're going to talk about the request for purchase. Director Catry, with respect to the Braemar Golf Course proposed renovation. Mr. Abud, Mr. Swenson, we've got all kinds of interested parties here.
Good evening. Joe Abud, General Manager at Braemar Golf Course. I want to thank you for having me here tonight, Mayor, members of city council. Exciting night for us. It's been a long time coming, but we are going to request for the bid award to the master plan project tonight. We have in attendance tonight, myself, General Manager, Tom Swenson, Golf Course Superintendent. We also have Larry Bearfield from Mid-America Golf and Landscape. And luckily, we have two members of our task force who have been through this entire process with us. They came to support us again tonight. We've got Rick Idis and Paul Presses. So it's a good night for the whole process and really excited about what's going on. We went out to bid last month, and it was a very good process for us. We did get six golf course contractors to bid on the project, very competitive. All the members of the, or the people who bid on the project were members of the Golf Course Construction Association of America, so they were all qualified bidders. So it was a very good bidding environment for us. Mid-America Golf and Landscape out of Missouri is the group that won, had the low bid for the project. They bid around $5.1 million, just in excess of that. So very good bid. We did get bids all the way up to $7.2 million. So a lot of difference between the different bids, but Mid-America Golf is an extremely qualified golf course contractor. They are presently in Lutzen, working on a project up there. Part of the, the good part about having them as a contractor, we saved a lot on mobilization because they will be coming down south as soon as they finish that project up in Lutzen. So it worked out in our benefit. So that was one of the good parts about it. But we're really excited about Mid-America. Our architect, Richard Mandell, has a very good relationship with Mid-America and their members. So we're excited about them being the low bidder on the project. We did have a project budget of $7.5 million is what we used in all of our performance from the very beginning. We are looking at $5.1 from Mid-America Golf and Landscape. We are going to propose two alternates tonight for about $215,000. We have $230,000 budgeted for a project manager slash shaper that will be on site during the entire process. Another one of Richard Mandell's recommendations, and I think it'll be a good asset for the city to have him on site on a daily basis. Architect, we already approved $395,000 in fees to Richard Mandell. We do have some several line items in here that are just educated guesses, but we hope to come in under budget on all these items here. Golf course accessories, $100,000. Engineering, $100,000. Grow-in, our staff will be doing the grow-in for the project. So we do estimate that at about $425,000. Permits, we have $55,000. That's one of the things we want to talk about later on tonight, waiving those building fees and developmental fees for the project. There will be some utility upgrades to the conference station that we have out on the golf course. We are planning on upgrading the piping for that. And then we have an eight percent contingency that we don't expect to use, but we have it there just in case, because you never know what's going to come through that. So right now, we were at $7.5 for our pro forma estimates, and we are at close to $6.9 million. So we are well under our pro forma budget, so that's a very good start to the project. We are going to propose tonight to accept, there was seven alternates within the bid. We are going to propose two of them. Alternate number two was to add 5,280 linear feet of walking trails around the, outside of the golf course for $146,000. As you can see in the map that we have here, we do have some existing trails that we are keeping, but we are going to extend it significantly out around the golf course. The other alternate we are proposing to accept is for bocce ball. I think that'll be a great amenity for the facility. It would be six bocce ball courts, and we are going to look at a little bit of a change, but we'll look at that down in the future, possibly using some type of other surface for the bocce ball courts. But that's something we're looking at right now, could be a deduct as well. So as it stands right now, we are at $68,000 for that alternate. Timeline. We are hoping to award the contract shortly after this meeting. Plan start date is the first week in October. September is generally a busy outing season for us at the golf course, and we do have the Ryder Cup that's right around that time. So we figured it'd be perfect timing to close the golf course at that point for the construction process right after the Ryder Cup. And that's, like I said, that's the first week in October. Plan completion date for the project is going to be June of 2018. They will have it all seeded prior to that. That's when the end of the grow-in process will be, and we'll hope to open up in the summer. One of the things that we have to think about in June of 2018 is just making sure the golf course is ready to open. I'm sure some of you have heard about some of the issues that Keller has had in opening it up early. We just want to make sure we have the right timing to open up the golf course at the right time. So that is a projected date. We're hoping if all things go well, that's the date we're going to open up, but that's just a projection at this point. So tonight, action requested is to approve the base bid as presented. Also approve alternate two for walking trails, approve alternate three for bocce ball courts, and to approve Mid-America Golf and Landscape for an amount of $5,324,322.93. And I wanted to open it up for questions or comments.
Member Swenson.
Number two, you had a view of the walking trails?
Yes.
Are, who's taking care of the buckthorn along there? And are we doing any other buckthorn abatement through this project?
I'll let Director Catry answer that question.
Member Swenson, thank you. Members of the council, we did not have any buckthorn removal as part of the golf course renovation project. I know that there was a mention in an earlier email in the last couple of days regarding that. And if you recall, when we started the master planning process for the golf course, we started with five different options, and two of those options expanded the golf course both into this east hill and to the west hill. Part of that plan, if we would have expanded the golf course into the hills on the east and the west side, would be to do some environmental improvements and to do some buckthorn removal, in addition to tree removal and a significant amount of grading to be able to accommodate those plans. So when the decision was made to keep the renovation within the existing footprint, we did not discuss any buckthorn or any impact to the east and west hills moving forward.
But in putting in 5,280 linear feet of walking trail, we will be removing something that's there?
Member Swenson, the walking trail that we're proposing is actually through the golf course?
On the edge of it?
No.
So show that sign again, because...
It's actually a walking trail that's intended to connect to the walking trail that's on the hill on the east side of the course, and it would come down along the south side of the course, and it would connect up through the, to the clubhouse. I know that it's a little difficult to see on this map, but it's the light blue line that you see. It would connect to our existing trail and then connect up to the clubhouse.
So this walking trail is going to be used during golf play?
It could potentially be used during golf play. That's the way that Richard Mandell originally designed it. As we've been discussing it, we certainly have some concerns about people getting in the way of golfers. But this golf course is very heavily used in the morning. It's heavily used in the evening after golf by a variety of different walkers, and they tend to just walk wherever throughout the golf course. But honestly, Richard's thought process in this design was that golf and walkers could coexist.
Golf walkers and dogs? Okay. Well, I just, I've played a lot of golf, but I don't usually play on a golf course where there are walkers that are crossing any of the, so are they going around the holes or are they crossing the holes?
They're going around.
Yeah, there's nothing that's crossing.
There's nothing that crosses, no.
Okay. Okay.
And we generally have a lot of walkers out there in the early season and the late season. And once golfers get out on the golf course, they generally tend to not go through the golf course. But we do get a lot of people walking their dogs and coming out early in the season and late in the season.
Okay.
Not like St. Andrews where they let them walk across.
Yeah, no.
Not going to let you, that stuff going here.
Okay. Well, I do have some concern, and it was mentioned in the email, for the amount of buckthorn we have, you know, on the edges of that. And as I've watched, Bredesen kind of grow in because of the buckthorn, how do we avoid having that happen here?
Member Swenson, our golf course staff regularly manages the buckthorn that's on the edges of the golf course. Tom Swenson might be able to address that, but that is something that they do actively manage on the edges of the golf course.
So that's the edges, but we haven't gone up into the trees?
No, we have not, Member Swenson.
Mayor, you walk that golf course?
Yeah, there's a lot of buckthorn in there. And certainly, the ideas around winter recreation and mountain biking has brought buckthorn up as an issue in the wooded areas. It's also brought people forward who are saying they are willing to roll up their sleeves and help out in getting rid of buckthorn. So it is something I think we should look at, because certainly, it's, I mean, it is keeping other plants from growing. We're discovering in the woods behind our house, we are discovering trees that are just starting to grow because they, now they can. Our woods was red oaks, a few white oaks, some ash, and buckthorn. And so now we've gotten rid of the buckthorn, and some beautiful flowering trees are coming up that we didn't plant, but they've been trying to grow. And so now they're there. And getting rid of the buckthorn was the key. But it is something, you have to keep at it. You're not going to do it once and you're done. Buckthorn is, it's the little engine that could, and it keeps wanting to come back. So it is something that, it's an effort. You have to look at it and kind of do it in waves. So what you did last year, you have to take a look at and redo while you do a new wave of it. And so it's a formidable effort, but it is one that can be done.
Yes, Scott?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think you can see that we did a significant amount of buckthorn removal on the Academy Nine side.
Yes.
And it was just, it was beautiful when it was done. And so we have that capability. We've done it before. But in answer to your specific question, there's not a massive buckthorn removal element of this plan, as I understand it. It wasn't, it was not included as a bid item.
I know.
So it's something we can take on. But if you're asking if it's included in these numbers tonight, the answer is it is not.
But we do have a czar of noxious weed abatement.
Right. Head weed inspector.
Thanks for being there.
I think you're the assistant.
Well, we do have some potential flexibility when we look at the estimate versus the actual cost. We've got about a five or $600,000 swing in there. I mean, I'm not saying that we should look at that for buckthorn abatement, but certainly I would be willing to downstream talk a little bit about what we could do and what that cost might be in terms of some appropriate buckthorn abatement in some location.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, we have spent a lot of time up in those hills over the last several months, and there is no doubt buckthorn is a very, very significant problem in that area. As Member Brendel stated, we have beautiful oak trees that are being choked out by buckthorn right now. So it is absolutely a very significant problem. As you know, we're also very sensitive to the Gulf Enterprise, and we want to make sure that as we're proposing this project and moving forward with the golf course renovation... sure that as we're proposing this project and moving forward with the golf course renovation, and the bonds will be paid for by the Gulf Enterprise, that we're specific in what we're charging to the Gulf Enterprise as part of this project as well.
I thought the bid was great. I'm thrilled with who's going to do it. I'm glad that Richard will continue to be involved.
I've got a question for you before we have a motion, Mr. Abud. You're requesting, the general information of the staff's requesting approval of the base bid, which is 5.109, and then you add in the add alternates, and you're asking for approval on the renovation project to Mid-America Golf and Landscape in the amount of 5.324, $322.93. So embedded in that 5.3 number is the $230,000 for the two add alternates, so are we anticipating that Mid-America would do both the walking trail and the bocce ball courts?
Yes.
Okay. So the bocce ball courts are something that they do?
Yes.
Or at least they would be able to supervise having done?
Oh, absolutely, that's part of their, they do have a separate business unit that does work specifically on sport courts and different things like that.
All right, and then the next question is, we have some other items in the spending plan which I think are appropriate, particularly that Project Manager Shaper, I think that's going to be important to have that person on site that has a close relationship with the architect. So these other expenses, do we have to approve those as well, or how are we going to manage that?
The other expenses were just part of the, what we had for the overall budget. City Manager Neil requested that we go ahead and map out exactly what we were going to be spending throughout the entire project, so I'm not sure we're approving that tonight.
Manager Neil?
I can speak to that. We want to be diligent project managers about this project. We want to make sure that we take this on and spend what we need to do the project at the quality level we need to do it at, but we are borrowing money based on a pro forma, based on golf revenue, so we want to be very careful with how we manage the project. So the numbers that you're looking at really are the numbers that we are planning to stick to for this entire project.
My question is, with respect to those additional items in the spending plan over and above the Mid-America Golf and Landscape base bid and the potential alternates, do we need to be approving the balance of those as well?
Well...
Because they're not embedded in the 5.3 number.
They are not embedded in the 5.3 number, and the specific action that you're asked to take tonight is to award the contract to Mid-America, so we're sharing with you, though, the number, the other numbers, like the architect's contract is one you've already approved, but the Shaper, you've noted, the project manager's additional cost, we wanted to show you what the contingency cost might be for this project, so I would say specifically the cost is just the award of the contract to Mid-America tonight.
All right, thank you. So do we have a motion to?
No, Stuart. Just a question.
Member Stuart.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and I, for one, I just want to say I appreciate disclosing all of those items so that there are no surprises. I don't like surprises, so that's good. I do have some questions about some of the alternates, one in particular, that the alternate number seven regarding topsoil and the wetland mitigation area, as I was reading, this is only a $2,450 item, but it sounds like we might also get credit for that same amount if we spend it. So it seems to me that financially we should be indifferent to which choice we make of doing or not doing the alternate number seven. Therefore, it seems to me the decision ought to be what's best for the environment, and after, as I read it, I thought doing alternate seven is what's best for the environment, so shouldn't we include that?
Do you want to speak to that one, Tom?
Superintendent Swenson?
I'm trying to remember in Richard's plan, but the, and maybe we can get some help from our contractor too, but the eliminating the topsoil removal, included in the plan was reorganizing everything in the south end of the course for a wetland. There was some topsoil removal to be done for that part of the project that could be used throughout the golf course. There was a discrepancy on whether it would be a large dollar amount saved if they weren't forced to move this soil to other parts of the course, and because there was not much saved, it was kind of a wash both ways. Richard was expecting it to be a large number, so it doesn't impact the environment per se.
Did the credit that I read about not, maybe I made that up, I don't know, I thought I read about a credit that we would get for that.
No, there's a credit, but I think the credit is that we're using that topsoil instead of bringing in new topsoil, but the savings isn't that great for the action of removing it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's super clear.
And it doesn't have an environmental impact.
Is there an environmental benefit?
I don't believe there's an environmental benefit.
Okay, that was really the nature of my question, thank you. On other items, the walking trails, we did get some correspondence about this, and I believe there are some existing, perhaps not city official walking trails, but some walking trails on the west side up through the hills there, and we got a comment in the correspondence requesting that we be sure to connect the east trails and the west trails. That doesn't seem to be part of this plan, is that something we should be considering?
Member Stuart, it is not part of this plan. This, again, is mostly focused on golf course. We do have a proposal in our budget for 2017 to do a master plan of Braemar Park, and that was the intention during that plan, is to really work on the trails and the connectivity of the trails throughout the entire Braemar Park complex, from the golf course, from the east hill, all the way up to Courtney Fields.
Okay, and I think you've addressed my next question, which is, with respect to the trails, I would want to make sure we coordinate walking trails, prospective mountain biking trails, prospective cross-country skiing trails, and have all of those fit together in a way that makes sense for each, and fat tire biking trails, if those are different. I don't pretend that I know all the nuances of what's best for each. So the, yeah, a single plan that was comprehensive and captured all of that, I think, would be important, so thank you. There's also a suggestion that we ensure that we have some parking over on the west side, particularly for people who want to use the trails, but perhaps that's part of that 2017 comprehensive plan as well?
It would be, Member Stuart, and, you know, a couple of parking areas that we do have that could be used seasonally, one is for the golf dome, you know, that would be a great parking location to be utilized, it's really busy from November until March, but during the other seasons, that parking lot sits mostly vacant.
And then, Mr. Abud, I have to ask, because I'm ignorant of it, you talked about Keller opening too soon and something happened there, so can you briefly just tell us what hap?
They have had tremendous response, a great response to the reopening of that golf course. The only negative thing we've heard about their entire project is they opened it up a little bit too soon, didn't allow the grow-in process to finish up, and the golf course conditions are suffering because of it. They love the project, the rounds are up, the play is exactly where they want, but they're not as happy with the product as they want it to be at this point.
The grass itself isn't hardy enough to withstand all the traffic and divots and things.
Correct, which a lot of traffic is a good problem to have, but it also affects the golf course itself.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying that, and I think those are all the questions I had, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Stuart, Member Staunton, anything?
The only one I'd ask about is the alternate on the concrete paths, can you just talk about your rationale on that a little bit?
The concrete paths would be more of a upscale-type alternate that we propose in there. We looked at it pretty hard, and we decided that one of our main things that we wanted to do was keep rates affordable, and we did not think that the added expense for a more of an upscale look, which is concrete, that would be a benefit at the rates that we were at, that we're planning on charging in the future. So while it would be really nice to have concrete car paths, the return on that investment without raising rates just isn't there.
Other questions, comments from council members? Otherwise, we entertain a motion to approve the staff-recommended adoption of alternate two and alternate three, along with the base bid renovation project being awarded to Mid-America Golf and Landscape in the amount of $5,324,322.93.
So moved.
Second?
Motion is second?
Include the cost of the two alternatives?
It does, yep, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay? Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
And the opening day for the rest of the driving range and the Academy Nine, did I put the name right?
The Academy Nine golf course is almost ready, it's very close. August 2nd is the big day. We will have a VIP and media event that day, and then August 4th is a very exciting day for us. It'll be, we're going to kind of do a triple header that day, we have a junior event in the morning, an adaptive program kind of in the afternoon, and then a lead preview in the evening, and the most exciting portion of that whole day is that we do have Annika Sorenson coming out to help us open up the golf course, so it's a, it should be a very good day on August 4th, so we're really excited about that. And the golf course is in tremendous shape, the staff has done a great job pulling it together, and the playing conditions are exceptional, so we're really excited about that.
Great.
And I want to just comment that Manager Neil and I were out, had lunch yesterday with Mr. Abud and Tom Swenson, and they've got, all the questions we asked, they were right on top of it, and they've been thinking about all these things well in advance of us thinking of issues that we thought were important, they've got everything covered. And to Mr. Itis and Mr. Prestus, again, thank you for your diligence and perseverance through this whole project, seeing it from the visioning state all the way to just about reality is a wonderful thing, you have continued to have that commitment, thank you so much. And Mr. Bearfield, do you want to come up and introduce yourself? Tell us just a little bit about your company? As long as you came all the way up here from Missouri?
Well, I came down from Luton.
All right.
But thank you for having us.
Would you give us your name and business address, please?
I'm Larry Bearfield from Mid-America Golf and Landscape at 1621 Southeast Summit Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. I came down from our project in Luton. Mid-America has been in business since 1993. Excuse me, we started as a golf irrigation company, we've grown into a full-service golf construction company, the founder of our company is the past president of the Golf Course Builders Association that we're talking about, we have another division that's grown into sports field construction, we build ball fields of all types across the country. In golf, we are a, we consider ourselves to be an elite builder in the way that we believe that we're not, our projects are maybe not as many at one time as others, but they're very important to us, and we don't do more than we can manage, and we're excited about every opportunity that comes our way. This project seems really neat to us, because, you know, you have, you have the venue in this community to do any type of tournament, any type of activity, as Richard told me, this is his Bethpage Black or his Chambers Bay. So those were the words that I got from him, so that's what we're coming here expecting to create.
All right, well, we look forward to it as well.
We thank you.
It'll be a wonderful experience, welcome onboard. All right, thanks, Mr. Abud, thanks, Mr. Swenson, thanks, Director Katry. Gentlemen, all right. Next matter is the request for waiver of city building fees and development permit fees.
Yes, Your Honor, we have developed a practice of bringing these requests to the council. There are three items included in this action, we ask, out of transparency, we ask the council to consider this and to approve the recommendation to waive fees.
Questions for Manager Neil? Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion is second to waive city building and development fees relative to the Braemar Golf Course master plan. Any further discussion?
Just...
Member Stuart.
Mr. Neil, you and I had some correspondence, and you confirmed for me that this is a customary kind of a thing, that, in fact, you couldn't think of any circumstances in which, with a similar request, we had not waived fees.
I can't, and I just, from a transparency point, I think, is where this has sort of come from, I remember Councilmember Bennett was the person who was a pretty strong advocate for this, I think in the past, the city managers in the past had just waived the fees and there was no discussion about it, and sometimes these numbers can be pretty high, so that's where...
We certainly don't want to bond for them.
Right. And in our case, our inspection fee revenue is chugging right along at a pretty good rate, if we were in the hole there or not going to make our budget, I might feel differently, but we're okay.
Good. Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay? Carried. Next matter, Resolution 2016-63, accepting various donations, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion is second to accept the donations on behalf of the city VDINA that are designated in Resolution 2016-63. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay? Carried. Donations this reporting period, VDINA Park and Rec Center, Recreation Arts Center, some in-kind donations, and then VDINA Park and Rec, Doug and Eugene King, and Diana and John DeBolus, nice gifts there on behalf of the little project over at Creek Valley School Park, thank you, and those donor names will be on the website. Next, we're moving on to the correspondence petitions portion of the agenda, Manager Neil, anything other than what was on the diocese evening?
Uh, no.
That you want to discuss under reports or under correspondence and petitions?
I will, under the, under...
Our comments?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Aviation noise update, Member Swenson?
Well, the knock meeting is tomorrow at 1:30 at the MAC offices off of Crosstown, and I'll be there. I know we have a resident that's asked to speak, and policy is that I have to put in a request at a pre-meeting, I have to have someone else second that request to get it approved, but we'll get there. Usually Minneapolis is very nice and seconds my request, and I don't really have anything new, we got to meet the new director tonight, which I thought was great.
Thank you. Manager Neil, any aviation noise update for you, from you?
No.
All right, thank you. Member Staunton, council comments?
I had a chance this morning to attend my first policy committee meeting for the League of Minnesota Cities. The League of Minnesota Cities on an annual basis advocates at the legislature for issues that are of interest to cities across the state, and it has an interesting process every year where it goes through a series of three meetings on a variety of policy committees to develop policies that have the consensus of cities around the state to advocate at the legislature. One that came across the radar screen today that I thought was interesting is, we had talked at our last work session, I think, about the potential legislation on right-ofways that would have permitted use of cell towers, mini-cell towers and right-ofways, and would have preempted any local regulation of that, and the city manager had mentioned to us that there was concern about that passing, and it was actually referred to today by league staff as a WBE, which I hadn't heard about before, which is, stands for worst bill ever. So I learned a new term today, but it's a terrific group of both staff and elected officials from cities around the state that go through this process, and so it's part of me beginning to engage with the League of Minnesota Cities in my new role as a board member, and I'm looking forward to it. The only other thing I've mentioned, and I know other members of the council were there, but had a chance to attend the 66 West groundbreaking... Uh, the only other thing I'd mention, and I know other members of the council were there, but had a chance to, um, attend the sixty-six West groundbreaking last week. It was a terrific event and one that, in the midst of a, a week that made all of us a little, um, a little concerned about our world. It was nice to see a, a moment of optimism where good things, where a community came together and made good things happen. And, uh, I was proud for the small part that I was able to play in that whole thing.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
Well, we do have the ribbon cutting at four o'clock tomorrow of the new pickleball courts with playing afterwards, but the weather might be a little tough on it. But I am planning on playing. I haven't told Ann that. Anyway, um, we, there's a field that the school district is doing up by Coleman, the practice field. And there's been some questions about their communication, which I've encouraged their, our residents to contact their representatives on the school board for that. And, you know, what our limitations are as to our ordinances. There is a question about whether they're putting a sign on that field or not. Um, and I know the planning department is gonna contact them and figure out, because there is no application in currently for a sign.
I think the intention on that is that they're putting the footings in for the sign and the sign is a future. So that's, that was my understanding.
Well, it makes the neighbors across the street kind of nervous about that. So the other thing I think we should continue to work with that neighborhood on, with that field is that that, they live on a dead-end circle that kinda comes up on the side of that field. And, um, when it's overparked for football. So we may wanna look at that and contact them and see if they would prefer that they only be able to park on one side of the street. And, you know, that we know then we can get emergency vehicles in and things like that. Does that make sense, Chad?
Yeah, there was some email correspondence to that sort and, uh, we talked, the school district wasn't changing their operations, but as, as they finish up their project, we can definitely look at whether the neighborhood wants.
Well, I think it's a field they're gonna use more and more and more. And as they use it more and more and more, people will park there. And I know that on football nights, the parking goes on both sides and you can get one car down one way and you can't really turn around very easily. So I think, um, we gotta make sure that it stays safe for getting our emergency vehicles in and it works for them as a community street. And then are you gonna talk about the Braemar feet, trees and the, okay, I'll save that and I'll, I'm done.
Good, thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you, I have a couple things. The Edina Crime Prevention Fund, which I serve on, along with the Edina Art Center, are working together on developing a memorial site for canines, for police canines. And it's right outside the front of City Hall. It is, uh, you know where the bench is by the oak tree on, on that side of the front of City Hall? The idea is to put a sculpture, a bronze sculpture of, um, of a German shepherd with a, a police dog, working dog with, um, with the badge. A sculpture there on a base and, um, and it'll be a life-size sculpture. And then kind of, uh, as you, as you cross the, the grassy knoll over toward the bench, then there would be spots for, um, headstones for the, for the dogs. And, um, and we've gotten, we've gotten great, uh, interest from Washburn McCreevy wanting to give a, give a nice discount on, on headstones. And so, uh, but it's, the specifics of it really haven't been decided yet. That's, that's now, um, now up to the art center. Michael Frye is gonna kinda lead that effort and, um, and come up with the exact specifics for it. But I don't know as a council whether we need to grant, uh, approval or support behind being, allowing, uh, a memorial site to be positioned at that location in front of City Hall, do we?
Are you looking for payment of, of the sculpture in that? No.
No. It's just to put it there.
Well, there is the memorial policy at Park and Rec, but I don't see that as falling under this. Do you, Manager Neil?
Well, when, I, I talked to, to Councilmember Brindle about this, this morning. When we had a similar, when we had a request from the Chamber of Commerce, which is an outs, you know, an outside friend of our, friend of the city, but an outside organization, to put a bench to kind of recognize a significant anniversary for them. We, they came in, we had a lot of discussion with them ahead of time, of course, and we knew that the council was gonna be supportive, but we did ask them to come forward and make a request to you and, and have the, have the council authorize that. So we discussed, we, we don't have a formal protocol, but, uh, in terms of being the property owner, you know, you, you are the, you're the, the representatives of the people who own this building. So I think, uh, that's what I would recommend.
So maybe have it on the agenda then?
At some, at, when it's, when it's ready for our consideration.
When it's ready to go and we have a plan to show you?
Yeah. I think that sounds reasonable and it sounds like we're talking about a bench, a statue and some.
The bench is there.
Right.
Yep. And, um, and the, the sculpture, uh, we've got, we've secured the funding for the sculpture, uh, from a variety of sources. And so now the group is going to get together and kind of really look at, all right, really designing the site. And, um, and then raising the dollars that are needed to, um, to do whatever landscape is needed. To, to make it what it needs to be.
And do you have the sculpt, the sculptor?
Yes, the sculptor is Michelle Recky. She's a bronze sculptor.
Okay.
Uh, she lives in Edina. She is known to Nick Legaros and to Heidi Hoy. And, uh, and so we thought, well, we've got Nick, Nick Legaros has sculptures in a variety of places around the city and, and around the Twin Cities. And Heidi Hoy has Spalding in front of Saloo and Michelle doesn't have anything. But yet she has been, I mean, she's won some awards for her dog sculptures. So, um, so she was selected and she's delighted. She, uh, she's an Edina resident and really happy to be doing this. So, uh, more to come on that to you.
So, just for understanding, the, the proposal would be to the city council that we approve that site? We approve that use of an installation?
To allow it.
In tribute to the police dogs that have served our community on that site next to City Hall? And then the headstones are just ceremonial? We're not, we're not gonna be burying dogs?
You are, you are very likely going to bury cremated remains. If the handler would like, um, the, the buried remains, or the cremated remains of Kodiak are at Kevin's house. And the cremated remains of Diesel are at Mike's house. And so they would like to bury those remains with the headstone. But it's all up to the handler. Some of the handlers may prefer to keep the cremated remains and do something else with them. It's my understanding that both Kevin and Mike would like to bury the remains under the headstone of those two police dogs.
Okay, so another decision for us.
Yeah, and, and maybe, maybe inherent in this is that the, the remains that are buried would be cremated. And that could be.
Okay. Just wanted to understand the scope of the, uh.
You know, I, I mean, it's a personal, but conceivably, hopefully, by the time the dog dies, that dog is a personal pet. Because the dog retires at about eight years of service and they're done, not, not, hopefully not done with their life at that point. So they become a, they become a family pet. But if they're gonna be placed here, um, that, that, I mean, we could say if they're gonna be placed here, they have to be cremated, just because it's easier.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alright. I have three buried up the way. Fourth of July parade, I want to give a shout out to the committee of the Fourth of July parade and say thank you once again for a great tribute for everyone to attend and have fun at. Let's see, we received a letter regarding the parade about, uh, the fact that the blankets and chairs are going out early, earlier and earlier. And this year it might have been like three days before and there were some blankets and chairs out there. Forest Lake, Minnesota actually has an ordinance that says you can put your blanket or your chair out after sunrise on the day of the event. That's their ordinance. So there are places that have ordinances like this and, um, and we were asked to consider whether that would be a good idea. In Edina to tell people, gee, three days before is a little early. So, anyway.
Manager Neil, you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, uh, I saw this, uh, message come through your system and, uh, so I, I had a chance to, to ask, uh, the leadership team, is there any, does this create any issues for us as, as a city government organization? It does not, you know, at, at this point it does not. Perhaps it could if people set their things out a couple of days in advance, you get a windstorm, everything blows all over into the street. Who ends up picking that up? It's probably our parks and parks guys and public works guys.
Or the residents who live there.
Or the residents who live there. In terms of, of restricting this, you'd have to adopt an ordinance, of course. But then I think you should, you should think through, uh, how would we sign it? Would we sign it with permanent signs, temporary signs? What's the cost of putting the signs in the ground? How do you police it? Is, do we have city, do we have police? Do we have parks people? Are they pulling this stuff up or are they taking it back to the police department? And then are we interacting then with people who think their stuff got stolen? Or do we go up and knock on the door and say, is this your stuff? It probably isn't, 'cause it's probably from somebody who brought it there. So it, it could, you, it could, can, it could work on voluntary compliance, like a lot of, like a lot of our laws depend on. But, uh, there are some enforcement issues that I think we just wanna talk through before you adopt, kind of define ordinance, of course.
No doubt. I just wanted to mention that ordinances do exist. Alright, that's.
On that same issue. Pardon me?
That'd be a great, great topic for speak of it.
Alright.
On that same issue. You know, um, this person had a particular point of view. I've had other people that tell me, only in Edina could you put your chair out two days in advance and have it still be there. And they think it looks kinda charming. So.
I had someone email me the week before the fourth to ask how early they could put it out and what could they put out and, yeah. That's all I got.
Alright. Member Stewart?
Thank you. On Friday, June twenty-fourth, I did a ride-along with a police officer. This was on a Friday night from eight o'clock till midnight and, um, I, I just wanna mention about our, uh, police officers and our police force. I, I think these are very conscientious people who are working hard to do, uh, their job and do it well. And, uh, so I was impressed with the officer that I was with and encountered a number of other officers as we, uh, did some roll bys and some other, uh, actions. Uh, some medical calls where we would encounter, uh, both, uh, the, uh, EMTs from the fire department and, and other police officers. Everybody, uh, involved, I think, very helpful. It was not a particularly active Friday night in terms of, uh, violent crime, uh, which is good. But it was, uh, good to be out there and be with that, those officers. On, uh, Sunday, June twenty-sixth, I, uh, joined a meeting of the Arden Park Neighborhood Association at Arden Park. This is another great neighborhood association, people who are, uh, very interested in, in how they can help make their community and their neighborhood, uh, better place. So, uh, it's good to see those folks out there and getting to know one another and, and, uh, joining together to, uh, improve their neighborhood. Uh, I also wanna mention, uh, Independence Day, a couple different city-sponsored activities. The Fourth of July parade, great thanks to Member Brindle and all the other volunteers who really make that event. This stuff is, uh, I just love it. It, uh, some people might think it's corny, but I think the Fourth of July parade and then the evening activities at Roslin Park, uh, the music and the fireworks, um, just great thanks to all the volunteers who make those things happen. Uh, also wanna point out that the grand marshal for the parade was John Sherman. John has been the, uh, son-current reporter for many, many, many years and, uh, serving Edina and, and has really helped, um, uh, be part of this community. And, and a lot of us, uh, got reported at by John when we were high school students as, as athletes. And, uh, and now as old men playing old man softball. But John does a great job and has always been a, a wonderful contributor to our community. Thanks to him. I, I wanna echo Member Staunton's comments on the sixty-six West groundbreaking. Again, great to come together and, and, uh, see, uh, good things being done by a group of people who are bonding, binding together and, and making good things happen. Also, uh, he didn't mention that same evening, July twelfth, uh, Member Staunton, Member Brindle and I all attended the park board meeting, which was interesting. To, uh, listen to the testimony, particularly of the mountain biking community that came over in, uh, in great force. Uh, and there was also an art center opening on Thursday, the fourteenth, uh, for, uh, what the art center is describing as the over-the-sofa exhibit. Where they have, uh, taken a number of pieces from various people's homes, including my home and Member Brindle's home.
And mine.
And, and Member Swenson's home. And, uh, and they have those on display. It's good fun to see the kinds of things people have collected over the years, so. And then things that are coming up here. The pickleball court dedication tomorrow at four o'clock has been mentioned. Uh, the grand opening, uh, at Braemar, there are two different, uh, sort of grand openings, one on Tuesday, August second, one on Thursday, August fourth, uh, for the driving range and for Academy nine. And then, uh, next, what would be the next city council meeting on a Tuesday is postponed to a Wednesday because on Tuesday, August the second, is the night to unite. Uh, so we encourage everybody to get together with your neighborhood and, uh, and join together to, uh, enjoy some time in your neighborhood and in the street and, uh, get to know your neighbors better. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a, a little redundancy, but, uh, important, I think, the individual observations we have about the Fourth of July parade. What an event and it gets larger every year. The, the, the depth of the people trying to watch along the parade route, i- it's really quite impressive. John Sherman was a wonderful, uh, grand marshal and was so appreciative. And, um, that night before, uh, we did a mayor's proclamation, uh, calling July third John Sherman Day in Edina, and he was very grateful for that as well. And, and thanks to Andy Montgomery, a longtime park board member now living in Eden Prairie, who had suggested John as a worthy grand marshal for the parade and it was a terrific choice. The parade itself, um, and the vets dinner the night before, well-attended again, the veterans dinner. Uh, just an observation there, uh, we met with the, um, person who runs the cemetery at Fort Snelling and they're twenty, we're losing twenty-two veterans. I think they said a day. Now they're doing twenty-two funerals a day on average in the summertime. Rick Murphy, John Swan, uh, did a wonderful job at the vets dinner and John Swan leading the parade. And I think Tom Gump leading the parade next year. Very?
Next two years.
Yeah, very good. I spoke at, uh, I was the speaker for the Ham and Eggs Group on the sixth of July. We had a regional council mayor's meeting on the eleventh of July. The discussion was on the shared economy, Lyft, Uber, Airbnb, some of the cities have already, uh, taken on trying to figure out whether they wanna permit Airbnb operations in their communities. We may face that issue as well, uh, in the near future. Sixty-six West, folks mentioned that, uh, that groundbreaking and as our colleagues said, it was a, just a terrific afternoon. And I think really was, uh, so important to our faith community to, to be there. All the, all the denominations that have worked so hard, uh, to make this possible, a place where young people can live and get a good, uh, leg up in life. It's, uh, it's gonna be a great thing for our town and, and we're proud of it. Manager Neil, I met with, um, Scott Tankenoff and Jim Nelson on the fourteenth to get an update on some of the things they were working on, uh, at Pentagon Park. Member Brindle in particular, I think, is, has been waiting for a long time for something to happen there. And it seems like on. And it seems like on the south side, they've got some ideas along the thread as to some things that could be an appropriate matchup for that particular park. Did walk with the mayor on the 16th on the Arnison Acres. Betty Workinger was our docent, Bob Coteen was our historian. We had a, we had a, a great outing there. And then my wife and Bob Coteen and I went down to look at the new trail segment of Valley Lane and walked, boardwalk all the way to 70th Street. Now, you can, you can make that whole, that whole trip. And that's just gonna be a terrific asset for our town. Southwest LRT coming up on Thursday. We'll see if somebody's.
Oh, you might have a meeting, I don't.
Yeah, no, not Community Works, but Corridor Management is meeting. Maybe we'll hear some information about whether or not we can find that missing $135 million, that 10% investment that's supposed to be made with the legislature that they're balky about so far. And then TAB Exec and TAB, full TAB meeting tomorrow. So, that's what's been on my plate from a meeting standpoint. I also wanna comment on, on, you know, when we did National Police Week back in, in May, we had data that was quite startling. There's been more and more police shootings. And then we see this, these horrible events unfold in Baton Rouge, where there's assassinations actually taking place of police. And I just wanna make sure that our police force understands full well how much we appreciate them. And our residents have been coming over, I think, to the police department with all kinds of, yeah, all kinds of food, yeah, big boxes of, of sweets and, and other things, I think, that you've enjoyed.
We have a, we have an opportunity. We have the Battle of the, Battle of the, the Blood Drive Battle.
Badges.
Badges on August 17th here between 7:30 and 9, 9 and 4:30. You can call ahead of time or go online and pick a spot, or you can just drop by. I'll be here, O positive.
So, the other thing Manager Neil and I talked about was both in recognition of what's happened in France and Nice, France, and also with respect to Baton Rouge, and recognize our, the importance of our own police. Fly the red, white and blue colors on France Avenue with our lighting system out there. And I think Manager Neil was gonna take care of that. So, we should see that happening on France Avenue, or the blue, white and red, depending on how you wanna look at it. So, that's it for me, Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Mr. Cashman has waited a long time for, for this discussion. So, I think I just wanna answer some of the questions that he raised about both in email and then earlier this evening. I have to take you back in time a little bit, back into the 2014, actually, when the city, the city had already agreed by this time, because the most of the agreement came together for the regional trail project with Three Rivers Park District in 2010. But there wasn't much happening there for a few years. But in 2014, we began to get serious about the project, 'cause it was just a couple of years from, from starting. So, during 2014 was the year when we were identifying all the various issues about how we were gonna work together. We were gonna do some things and they were gonna do some things. And, and, and there's a whole agreement that was laid out that was approved in January of 2015, but was largely negotiated in 2014 that has sort of this string of mutual agreements. One of those mutual agreements was that they needed a piece of land that we controlled. And it's the, it was the, is the Amundson and 70th site. And we use it for public works, junk and materials and storage, outdoor storage, things that you don't want next to your house, but things that are just part of running a municipal public works operation. And they have to be somewhere. And they were on this site for many years. But the park district needed it because they had to have a way to get the trail under 70th Street and then swing it all the way back up onto 70th Street and then continue east on 70th to get to the bridge and get over. And it's just the way that this worked out, that they had to have this, this location, which meant that we had to take the activities and operations that were centered on that 1.5 acres, and we had to move them somewhere. So, in the agreement that we, that was approved by council, we lay this out. And it, so it says that we're going to give them this land. And in exchange, we're going to find a different piece of land that can be used for the same activity and that Three Rivers has to pay to improve that land so that we can use it for the activities we need to use it for. Well, they, they did a pretty exhaustive search of, of the town. And as you might imagine, there aren't a lot of places that fit the bill for this kind of activity. But one they found was on the west side of that, of the, of the west ridge, I guess we'd call it on Braemar, directly adjacent to the already existing large operation of the public works cold storage building. So, we made, we made the call and made that was gonna be our deal. They were gonna, they were going to dig into the hillside a little bit. So, we had 1.5 acres for this activity at Amundson. This'll be under, and, under an acre, I think, .9 acres upon completion. But that's where they're replacing that land. And so, they're kind of, they're fulfilling the agreement that we made with Three Rivers. So, there is some tree, there is tree removal there. And tree removal is not something that we relish. We don't like to, to remove trees, especially quality trees. But this is also an activity that we just have to have space for in, in order to operate this, this function in city government. So, we tried to minimize, first of all, how much land we needed. We tried to do it in a place that wasn't going to, to interrupt the daily lives of, of residents of the city. But one of the things we did do that interrupted daily lives is there's a trail that runs through this area. And the, the trail has been cut off because of, of this, of this project. The plan had always been to move that trail a little bit to the east and to reconnect the ends of it. And in retrospect, I wish the contractor would have did that move first and set the new trail out and then, and started with the project. But that's not what happened. They're getting ready to move into the, to move, to take the trail under 70th Street. They're gonna be closing 70th Street, which had for six weeks.
Six weeks during the end of August.
Yeah, it'll be very, it'll be very disruptive. But that's about the time when they're gonna be doing a tunnel, they're gonna be digging a tunnel under, under 70th Street to get that trail from north of 70th to south of 70th. We can't have traffic on the, on the road while that's happening. But that's coming up. But anyway, that's the explanation about what this project is, where it came from. It's been, like a lot of aspects of this trail project, we approved them several years ago and, and they, and they've gotten a little cold since they were initially discussed and resolved and approved. But this one popped up very quickly because they realized, part of the agreement is, they have to have this site done or close to done before they can have access to the site that we currently use. So, that's, that's what happened.
Now, there's a conservation easement in that, in that area as well.
This is, this is outside of the conservation easement. So, the area that is part of this area that's going to be used for this new activity there, or expansion of the public works utility, is staked. So, you can see where the stakes are. Trees haven't been removed that we didn't need to have moved. And they are not removed out of the conservation area.
And then once, 'cause there's a retaining wall.
That has to be built, right.
Okay, so there's a retaining wall as part of this. And after that's built, are they're gonna, now the trail will be reconnected.
Right.
Rerouted, reconnected. Will trees be planted at that point?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our best to recreate some kind of vegetative buffer in there between the trail and the top of the retaining wall. There'll probably be a fence across the top of that retaining wall, too. Yeah, maybe Buckthorne wouldn't be the best idea, but we do need to have some security. Yeah, that's not an idea. We'll have some kind of security issues there, 'cause there will be a pretty tall retaining wall at that point.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's all.
Could we go back to that closure on 70th? So, is Tracy going to be back open by then? And the roundabout completed on Valley View? Or what, what will be the status? Or how will people try to navigate around that closure?
The Tracy Avenue Roundabout, Mayor, the project you mentioned, is still on schedule to be open before school starts, so full operations there. The stage one of Tracy Avenue, north of Highway 62, should be opened mid-August. And they're working on the segment from Arbor up to Benton. Stage two will be in September sometime. So, yes, that roundabout will be open before 70th Street is closed. Mendat's ramps will be open and their bridge work on 77th Street will be completed prior to the closure also.
So, they'll close the segment from, what, Metro Boulevard all the way up to Cahill?
Correct.
And they'll, they can route it though around past Public Works through, it's a little.
The detour will be Cahill to 77th and then back up Metro. We anticipate some cars cutting in from the Public Works site. It's a little bit more of a, more turns needed to make that, so we don't want that as a signed detour.
Okay. Last thing I'll, I'll say is that tonight was a really, a big night for the city. When I think back to the, the, just the turmoil, the big decisions we made about the Gulf Enterprise four years ago, three years ago, there were a lot of people that said we'd never do this. They didn't have confidence that the city would actually organize and move forward with a Gulf project. But we developed a strategy, we had the council sign on to the strategy. And so far, the strategy's been working. And this is, this was a big, this was a big moment, I think, particularly for Ann Catry, who did a lot of work behind the scenes and in front of the cameras to make it all work. So, thanks for, thanks for following through with that. That's all I have.
Thanks for that recognition. Anything else from anyone? Otherwise, we'll adjourn and go to the HRA and get that work done. All right, council meetings adjourned. Convening, the meeting of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for the city of Edina, Tuesday, July 19, 2016.
Three.
Forty-three?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
We're only two minutes off schedule.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brindle.
Here.
Commissioner Stoughton.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Swenson.
Here.
Chair Havlin.
Here. Excuse me. We've got a agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the form of agenda?
Sound vote.
A motion of second to approve the agenda discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. We have two items on the consent agenda.
Sound vote.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion of second to approve the consent agenda discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Any other business for the HRA? No, sir. All right. For, for members of the HRA, anything?
No.
Okay. HRA stands adjourned.